All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 17th Board of Commissioners meeting. Sorry we ran a little bit late on getting started this evening. I had a little technical difficulty, but we're up and running now. First order of business this evening is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. We do, we don't have anyone sign up to deliver the invocation this evening. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to come over and come up and lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance, you're welcome to do so. Seeing no one jump up, then I will ask Commissioner Beaumont this evening to do that for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Heavenly, Heavenly Father, we come before you on this glorious night in Currituck County. Father, I ask you to bless this first meeting of the Board of Commissioners and meeting of the year. I ask that you would bless this entire year as we discern the will for our county and the governance of our county. Lord, I pray that you would give us wisdom as we listen to the events and the aspects of the issues before us this evening. Father, that you would grant each of us wisdom as we decide upon what we believe to be the best for Currituck County. Lord, bless this evening. Father, I pray that you would protect each and everyone in this room and their troubles home. Lord, I pray that you would grant us wisdom and favor this evening in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Next up is our ethics awareness and conflict of interest reminder, and Ms. Leanne's going to do that for us this evening.
Pursuant to G S 183A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interests, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under D S 14-234, 153A-340G, or 160A-388E2. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
Anybody? Okay. Thank you. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to go ahead and add an item under new business, under board appointments. I'd like to add Item C, Lower Currituck Volunteer Fire Department Fireman's Relief Fund Board, appointment of Kathy Miller and Jonathan Britton.
Thank you, sir. Any other changes? All right. So, have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposeds? Thank you. All right. Next up will be a public comment. Before I jump into that, I just want to say we're missing one commissioner tonight, Ms. Kitty Etheridge. She's at home, a little under the weather, so we wish her a speedy recovery, and we'll miss her here this evening. And with that, we'll move into a public comment. The first person that has signed up is Denise Fallon, and as always, please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Denise Fallon. My address is 553 Winslow Road in Hertford, North Carolina, but I'm the principal of JP NAP Early College, and that's why I'm here this evening. So, at JP NAP, it's that time of year that we start recruitment, and so I'm here this evening to share a little bit of information about our school so the word can spread around Currituck that we're looking for great students at JP NAP. So, we will visit both middle schools and share information later in January. We also have two parent meetings scheduled. One of those is virtual, and that is January 30th, and we have another option for face-to-face meeting with parents on February 2nd. Parents can choose to attend one. They don't have to attend both. And so if there are any parents out there that are listening or watching, if they have students that are homeschooled or private school, but they live in Currituck County, we encourage them to join us for those meetings to learn a bit, a little bit about our school. JP NAP is one of the many early colleges across the state, so I thank you for your support of our school and our efforts to educate students. And last year, about eighty percent, a little over eighty percent of our students graduated from high school with an associate degree or certification, in some situations, from College of the Albemarle. And that's something we're extremely proud of at JP NAP. Those students work really hard, especially in the aftermath of COVID. Those graduates survived that, and they prevailed. So, really excited to share information about our school with students. Our application window, we do an online application, and that window opens at the beginning of February, on February 6th, and it'll stay open for the entire month until the beginning of March. And when the application closes, we'll start to get recommendations from teachers that the students give us their names. This is the teacher I want to be my recommender. We'll also ask students to submit a video. We don't do face-to-face interviews anymore. We found through COVID that students really thrive in that online world, so they create their own videos and submit those for our review. And then we'll let students know about their status with us in April, and we'll continue that process, and they'll accept our invitation to attend and so forth. But really excited about kicking off recruitment at JP NAP and wanted to share that information with you here this evening and answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? Comments?
I'd just like to tell Denise, Ms. Fallon, or Principal Fallon, we'd say, I mean, they do a great job at NAP. Like I said, sometimes I fill in there as the SRO for a day or for a few hours or whatever, but that, that school was ran like a factory. They do a really, really good job. You have some great staff and great students, and there's a lot of positive stuff coming out of there, so keep up the good work and good job.
Thank you, Kevin. I appreciate you saying that. Kevin hangs out in my office sometimes. He tells me that's where he feels, you know, right at home. I don't know.
It's kind of like I used to have to go to the principal's office, but it's like, now, yeah, but now like I'm in there with a gun and badge, so I'm not, I'm not in fear.
It's a safe place.
Yeah. He tells me he got in trouble for talking a lot in school. I don't know. I don't know. Is that hard to believe? Maybe not.
Very little seems.
Thank you, Kevin. I appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much.
That's all I have. Thank you so much.
We appreciate it. Have a good evening. All right. I don't have any, well, I have David signed up, but I see you're further in on another, on Ashbrook Estates, so I'm going to assume that you do not want to speak on a public comment this evening. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to public comment?
Mr. Chairman, I did get you to sign up, but I do want to make something. I'm here to speak on something else. Can you add me for the Ashbrook?
Yes, sir.
John Snowden, 112 Maple Road, also own property at 180, 194, and a couple of other places. People know me as Farmer John. I grow food. I don't grow houses on my farmland. I would like to thank everybody for showing up tonight. It's really important that we participate in our government. For those of you who don't know me, I published a newspaper in Currituck from 2002 to 2009. The economy took out our newspaper, and we really don't have a venue now like a newspaper to publish what's going on and keep an eye on county government. Ike can attest to that. I was kind of vigilant back in the day. I came up tonight to speak on Ashbrook, but I also wanted to thank everybody for being here. Thank the commissioners for giving us the opportunity to speak, and I also wanted to apologize to Commissioner Payment. I've called all the commissioners, even Kitty Etheridge, who's not here, and we had rather minimal conversation of everything. Mr. Payment and I, I got a little heated with him. Mike and I go way back, junior high school, I believe, right? So, and we're still friends despite that, but I wanted to publicly apologize even though the public didn't hear that. And I, I called you afterwards and apologized. So, I guess I'll speak at Ashbrook, but thank, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight to speak.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one, I will close the public comment. We'll move on in our agenda to Commissioners' Report, and I guess it's apropos that you brought up Mike Payment. He's, he was chairman for two years, and as such, we wanted to give him a parting gift to hang on his office for anyone that came in. It was supposed to be a surprise, but I kind of screwed that up.
It was a surprise.
But this is in recognition of your dedication and service to the citizens of Currituck County, Chairman of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners from December 2020 to December 2022. So, thank you very much, sir, for your service in our county. Thank you.
Nice on my office there.
And with that, I'll go ahead and let you start with public, Commissioner Comment this evening.
Well, I will just, again, I just want to thank John for coming up and, and offering that apology there. And thank you, I guess, for the board for recognizing his chairman. It's been an honor. It does take a lot of extra work, as I said. It's rewarding, but it does take extra time, and it's always good to, to share the experiences and that and move along with that. So, other than that, I don't have a whole lot tonight, other than thank everyone for coming out. It's your opportunity to come and speak to the board, and we, we always appreciate the feedback and comments. And, you know, please just remember, you know, this is open for all the citizens to email us, call us, come out to these meetings, speak to us, to help us with our decisions. Other than that, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Joffe.
First of all, I want to say Happy New Year. This is our first meeting of the year. This meeting always brings a, a lot of excitement to me. It was four years ago today that I was sworn into this board, and I still enjoy it. I'm still learning. It's been a straight uphill learning curve, but this new year gives me a lot of hope, and I look forward to doing the work of the people here in 2023 and hopefully doing all the things that are trying to tackle as many things on our checklist as possible. I also want to say congratulations to COA's Phi Theta Kappa Nu Nu Chapter. They were recognized recently as the first and only Honor Society chapter of Phi Theta Kappa to be a five-star chapter, and that is a, a lot of hoops to jump through. I am extremely proud of them. Out of the thirteen hundred or so organizations across the United States, they are the first to jump through all the hoops to become a five-star chapter. Phi Theta Kappa recognizes academic achievement of college students and provides opportunities for its members to grow as leaders and scholars. I want to say especially a shout out to the Currituck students, most of them who go to NAP or who have been students at NAP, who held offices during this process. First of all, 2021, 2022 President Carson Beddington, Beddinger, excuse me, 2021, 2022 Vice President of Scholarship Gabriel Dick, 2021, 2022 Vice President of Leadership Kara Young, 2023, 2 and 2023 Public Relations Officer and Recording Officer Catherine Washam. Congratulations on a job well done. I would also like to finally say thank you to the members of the Currituck County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council for all the hard work that you've put in and all the hard work you continue to do for our at-risk youth. At our January meeting a week ago, we were reviewed our risk and needs data as it compares to juvenile offenders in the state and our region, and in nearly every single category, we rose above the state averages and did better than the averages across the state and region. And I give the credit to our strong programs like PASS and Teen Core and Arrestition Program and the people who day-to-day run those programs that really help these kids get back on the straight and narrow and become thriving citizens. So, thank you for all the work you do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Etheridge. No one?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I've gotten a lot of calls and messages recently, as I'm sure the other commissioners have, on the trash permits to get into the convenience center, and I just wanted to go over what the criteria is right now. Each property owner receives a total of two permits regardless of the number of properties they might own, and they get that because that's their primary residence. There's no exceptions granted in this program. It was adopted. Mainland property owners will receive two blue permits, outer banks property owners, two red permits. Those who own property both on the mainland and the outer banks will only get the two red permits if their primary residence is the mainland. Long-term renters, there is a process and a procedure that a renter or leaseor of a home can get a permit, and all you have to do is just submit an application and approve of the lease or the rental agreement is required. If you lose your permit, you can get a replacement permit, but there will be a $75 charge for a replacement permit, and no more than two permit replacements in the two-year period will be issued. There are communities or people that have not received their permits yet. If you have the red permit from last year, just keep it in your window until you receive the new permit. I understand that they're working through finding out those that do not have them. You've got a growing list, I understand, and just be patient, and hopefully everybody will get their permits soon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can I add one thing? I did get a, I did get a question regarding permits. Someone asked me, what if there's stops sticking to the window or it got, or it just got mangled or something? Can they bring in and exchange it?
Yes, they, they can bring in the, the mangled or sticker that's not working and exchange it for one.
Or no charge?
Yeah. Well, yes.
Yes.
And they are static cleaned, so you can move them from vehicle to vehicle if necessary?
No, it's, you can clean them with a little, little soapy water. Clean your windshield helps a whole lot, but if they do stop sticking, try giving them a clean first. I think you'll find that that will help out immensely, so.
And Mr. McCree, can you please explain, like, the process that rental houses, if, if you have rental houses in the four-by-four section of the county, how those renters and people who utilize that property will get stickers? Do they have to go on and get beach parking stickers?
I'm going to look to our clerk to, because some of this.
She, she deals with those calls daily?
I've not been intimately involved in the.
All right.
I'm sorry. If you, are you talking about permanent renters or just?
No, the, the, yeah, the seasonal, the, the runners that come in week to week.
We're going to handle that the same as last year. So, we distributed guest passes to each of the rental companies for distribution to their weekly visitors. If you are a property owner that rents your house through a VRBO or an Airbnb, you can go into the visitor center in Corolla and, and get your passes weekly. So, that, that process hasn't changed.
Okay.
And if you, if you are a property owner up there or a resident, you can get two extra guest passes for your, your personal guests as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So, do the waste permits still count as beach parking?
Yes.
What if the number of adults with four-wheel-drive vehicles exceeds two?
Sorry.
So, not all Currituck County residents can go park on the beach?
Well, they have, they have to, if they're renters, they can get an extra pass. I don't, you know, not everybody has eleven kids, so, but the reality is, most people are fine with two. We've got the overriding majority.
So, the exceptions do what?
I don't think we have an exceptionary rule built in.
No exceptions.
At this time, they're, they're off, they're about to be.
We'll find out.
Well, the other thing. I've got one. I'm just telling you. I've got one right now. I've got three vehicles that are four-wheel drive.
So, I think we'll have to work through that, but the question is, will you always go to the beach with all three vehicles at the same time, in your case, probably? But in the, in the average person's, no. And the problem was, it was abused last year.
Understood.
So.
The, as far as the dumps, the convenient sites, you know, when they go in there, as far as with your sticker, if you didn't receive yours, I've witnessed it personally. I mean, because I'd gotten a different truck last year and didn't have the sticker because it went with the other one, but the, you know, if you have your driver's license with your address, you're a current Currituck County resident.
You're good.
You know, you're covered. They're very easy to deal with.
All right. And with that, why don't you go ahead and jump in on Commissioner Comment?
All right. I'll jump in next for me. Tomorrow is the Wounded Warrior Escort that comes in. It's a little different this year. Usually, Brooks Parks runs that, where they have a group of guys from the Wounded Warrior Foundation. They come down, they hunt, they do all kinds of fun stuff in Currituck County, and there's so many businesses, I'm not even going to attempt to, to name every one of them, that sponsors just follow social media. That's like positive stuff on social media, not people complaining. But they, they're coming in tomorrow at four o'clock at the Welcome Center, and we're escorting them through Currituck County to their house where they're staying at. So, if you want to stand out by the road, they're leaving the Welcome Center at 4:15. So, to get from 4:15 to the bridge till probably 5:00, I'm sure there'll be some people on Facebook Live, live streaming it and so forth and so on. It's a great event. This is the twelfth year they've done that. It grows every year. I know the weather's supposed to be good. They have the Jeep Club, the Patriot Guard, the Sheriff's Office, Fire and EMS, Crawford, all the different, MoYak, station file, all the, everybody participating, showing these guys a good time, so forth and so on, as they come through the county and they do previous, or they do, they hunt, they do all kinds of stuff in the county. So, tomorrow, 4:15, they leave the Welcome Center, be out in front of your business, American flag, rooting them on. Like I said, that is tomorrow. Next thing, last week, like you said, our job, we sit on various different boards. We had our Animal Control Board meeting last week. I asked the commissioner that sits on that. We had a great meeting. Our animal services from the shelter, we're a model shelter, I mean, like, all across the state, people come here to see our shelter and how it's ran. Gina and Rachel do a great job. The animal control, everything's ran at the, the same thing. Brandon Dozier does an awesome job. Tammy Capps, all the people, I'm not going to name them all, but just some off the top. They do a very, very good job. We had our meeting Tuesday. We hadn't had one in a long time because of either COVID or somebody was sick or somebody was something, but we had a very positive meeting. It was well-attended. Just different stuff. I, one thing, oh, I would like to say this. The, I sat this today, actually, and last week, on a promotional board for our Fire and EMS services, and the amount, sixteen out of twenty-four people, I sat in on their interviews where we asked them various questions. I was amazed, I've lived here pretty much my whole life, I was amazed at how trained, educated, and how much that our county Fire and EMS staff has, not trying to take anything or say anything negative, but it amazed me of how quality of people that we had. I mean, I did not, hadn't, I mean, I worked with these guys every day and didn't know that they had, I mean, we were getting resumes of planning or training thick as a phonebook almost on some of these guys. So, as a county, we're super lucky to have, you know, that type of public safety and, all the guys, it was really cool. One of the questions that they asked them was, what's the most important 911 call that you, that we receive? And, and I swear out of sixteen that I sat in, all of them, they, a lot of them stressed on customer service. You don't think of customer service when you come and call EMS because you're hurt or whatever, but they just stressed on, they're there responding to something at a terrible time, whatever, and they just, every person, literally, it was, it was amazing how smart and how, you know, their responses. We're very fortunate to have those guys and gals working in the county and just, you know, thanks to them and all that they do. But it, it was just amazing how they stressed on the different, you know, I mean, professionalism. I've learned their mission statement because I heard it so many times when we, when we were in there, but, but like I said, just hats off to those guys and hats off, you know, to our county staff in general. I mean, we have, I was talking to one of the guys in there, compared to a neighboring county, their tax rate's eighty-seven cent, and a third of their services come from other counties. So, they're like almost double our tax rate, and he was just saying of all the stuff that we provide, we do our county in-house and just, you know, keep up the good work. Nobody's perfect. Just read Facebook and you'll see that. But hats off to them, and like I said, tomorrow, don't forget, please attend. Like I said, it's a great thing for the county, well-attended every year, the different neighborhoods. Currituck on the Sound, I think, you know, is like typically one of your leading neighborhoods, like, has like sixty people out there every year. But it'll be weird this year because it's usually Saturday morning when they're leaving, but they're leaving at nighttime this year, so we're doing the escort in. So, when you see all the cars, you'll have some moron post something on Facebook, probably complaining about lights and siren or whatever, but it, it's for the military, it's for a good cause, and like I said, keep your negativity to yourself. I did forget one thing. We had a horrific accident which did not indirectly affect Currituck, well, it did affect Currituck County. Prayers to the Hayhurst family, that tragic wreck, I believe it was last week, Wednesday or Thursday, which was on the expressway, was one of our residents, super guy. Him and his brother went to school here, young, I mean, thirty-seven years old, so condolences to his family. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Beaumont? So, kind of jumping back in the solid waste discussion. So, I've been a commissioner over eight years now. I have never received as many phone calls. It's almost Kevin level on. You're welcome. And that's, the only reason it's limited, that is because my batteries die. So, I've been to a bunch of the, the transfer stations, and the, the first thing I'm going to say is, in general, the, the performance of the waste management people, a lot of smiling, a lot of, you know, so I've had some complaints about that. However, comma, my personal experience has been, they've all been top-notch, and they're new, so they can't blame the fact that, and the way I'm dressed, there's no way they think I'm a commissioner. So, that's number one. The second thing is, I've seen at least three or four times, I've seen trucks with Virginia tags that are commercial trucks that have an orange sticker on it, unloading a whole bunch of stuff that didn't come out of somebody's house. So, I don't know what that looks like. I don't know where, how, you know, we can do that, but there should be, I'm, a commercial, you know, a truck that's driving in there with commercial stickers on it and is a business, and it's out of state, I'm not sure, someone has to reconcile whether or not, just because they got an orange sticker, that's, that's allowed to dump, because it's not a bag of trash. It's a flipping, you know, F-350 duly unloading.
But the orange sticker doesn't allow them to dump construction trash. They actually shouldn't be doing that anyways.
They're supposed to go to the.
It's just, even if they had the orange sticker, it's just residential trash, so, I mean, yeah, that's a.
Look in the bulk. I mean, there's always stuff that's not, quote-unquote, anyway.
We'll follow up with Public Works and Waste Management on that.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Commissioner. Thank you, sir. Well, I was going to say something about that, but I'm out. It's been covered to death, but I will say that the Board of Commissioners retreat, and we retreat basically to this room or some other county building to, to do a work session over multiple days. So, the, the third and the fourth, March 3rd and 4th, we're having our annual retreat. That's Friday and Saturday. A myriad of topics will be discussed at that time, but that is open to the public. We encourage the public to be there. You will find out what's going to happen in the next year with this county, what we're, what we're talking about, what we're thinking, how we come up with the ideas that you may or may not like. I see that several people from Corolla here, they always have a nice contingency. People show up and put up with us for two days. But, you know, if you, if you can't attend to all of it, we understand, but it, it is how your county government works, and it sets the tone for the next year and years to come. So, please try and make an effort to come in and, and see what we're doing. And that's it for me this evening. Next item on the agenda is the County Manager's Report. We'll move over that way.
Just following up on the point you just made, Mr. Chairman, I, I would expect and hope that the budget, that the retreat this year will be budget, budget-centric. We've got a lot of budgetary issues that, that the board needs to work through and give some direction on. Since early December, I guess our budget team, me, the Assistant County Manager, Finance Officer, and Assistant Finance Officer have been meeting with all departments to go over a five-year capital improvement program that we're putting together and want to present to the board, certainly a budget time for you to adopt, and, and part of that will be forecasting revenues. And, and part of that will be forecasting revenues over the course of those years to find, find and figure out which of those capital needs are funded or will need to be funded, uh, in the outlying years. Um, it's been a very good exercise, the departments have done a great job in participating in that, have put a lot of thought, uh, into forecasting what might be anticipated needs for the county over the next five years. Uh, they have developed, if they didn't have one, a mission statement for each department, uh, their organizational chart, and all of that is going to be seen by the Board in a budgetary format that we'll talk about more during the retreat, that is different than any other type of budget that you've seen in the past, which is going to be in the form of a narrative budget, uh, so that the Board and then, and most importantly, the public, uh, can understand why we're funding things, why the need to, um, increase funding for certain departments or certain needs, uh, along with graphs and things of that nature, to make it a document that is understandable and useful, uh, to the Board and the public. Uh, so that's what we'll be talking about, uh, during the budget process and, and, uh, for you to ultimately adopt later this spring. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions, comments for the manager? All right. County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one thing, the occupancy tax litigation has been scheduled for oral arguments at the North Carolina Court of Appeals on Wednesday, February eighth, at nine-thirty a.m. Outside counsel is representing us on that matter, Ike and I are going to attend, so if anybody's interested in driving up with us, just let me know. February eighth. That's it.
Where, where was that again, I'm sorry?
Raleigh.
I'm Raleigh.
Court of Appeals.
All right.
Nine-thirty, so we'll be leaving about five or five-thirty.
Oh, I can't wait to get up for that. All right, thank you.
Should pick Owen up on the way out.
Slide with Bobby.
He'll already be there, he's already been there for a couple hours.
I'm breakfast.
Um, all right, next up is public hearings, uh, item one, PB eighty-seven dash fifty-six, Monterey Shores, Phase Ten, Part A, request for preliminary plat, special use permit for six lots, five single-family residential and one commercial at the proposed Corolla Boat Club, Monterey Shores, PUD Phase Ten. This property is located at Malia Drive in Corolla, Tax Map one sixteen, parcel ten, Poplar Branch Township. And this is one we carried over from our last meeting, we had a few items that, uh, questions, comments, concerns, and, um, so with that, uh, who wants to go first? Kevin, do you need to jump back in on anything from your department or Jenny?
I think it would be best to have Mr. Bissell present some of the, uh, work he's done since the last meeting, and then staff can respond to that.
Okay, great, thank you. To the
Public comment piece will follow that.
The public comment is still, uh, still open, we did, we did not have that last time.
You guys swear in some people.
Any, any new people that come up, yep.
Thank you. Chairman?
Good evening.
Evening.
Don't worry.
Silent time.
Okay, so there were a couple of outstanding issues the last time we were here, and, um, the biggest one had to do with the NC DOT right-of-way.
Mm-hmm.
And we had been told by DOT that, uh, they wouldn't be able to process an application for a driveway permit or encroachment agreement for the use of that right-of-way, but, uh, you know, we were asked if we could get anything in writing, and we hadn't up until that point, but we went ahead and, uh, took the wool by the horns and prepared a construction plan and filed a driveway permit application and, and an encroachment agreement application. And, um, and we received a written response, uh, late Sunday afternoon, which I would like to pass around.
And I would advise the Board, this is hearsay, it's an out-of-court statement, and this David Oats is not present to testify, so I would advise you to not consider this.
Okay.
So basically, what it says is, um, that, uh,
Again, that's hearsay.
Right.
That the request for access cannot be considered at this time.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I don't think I have the ability to drive, uh, so I want to kind of try to put everything in context here.
Okay.
We submitted, um, an application for this first phase, and, you know, I think the, uh, staff hadn't had any issue with this being the first phase of the development, we've had some controversy with what should be included in the phase. And, um, so we developed this plan, uh, that shows the sequence of events, uh, that we intend to complete with the development in a, in an orderly fashion. So what you see here is a copy of the approved master plan for the development, and we have provided some, some phase lines that show what goes with what phase. And I'd like to kind of just run through what that, what that is. You know, the phase that's, the first phase that's before you is for the five, you know, I wish I had a pointer, but you have the five, um, residential lots and the one commercial lot, along with the access, um, road and the improve, any improvements to, that are within the Malia Drive right-of-way. It's like, uh, there's a sidewalk there, there's some testing that needs to be done to make sure that the roadway is up to DOT standards, and then the other infrastructure that goes with it, water and sewer lines, stormwater and so forth. The second phase that we have proposed is the multifamily phase, which is flanking the, uh, the access road on both sides. The third phase would be the boat basin and dock. And the fourth phase would be the, the, um, paddleboat rental, which is at the bottom, or, yeah, right in that area. And the fifth phase would be the mixed use there behind, um, Timbuk II. And the fourth and fifth phases may be done concurrently, but, um, those are the ones that need the, the DOT right-of-way as an access. So what this illustrates is that we don't really need this causeway and right-of-way improvement until we get to Phase Four. And because of the uncertainty with DOT as to when they might approve something or how they might want to see that done, we would like to delay the, the building or the approval, the bonding of those until, until that phase. So anyway, the Board asked us to study the idea of making the connector road a one-way road, and we've done that. If you could move to the next one. So this shows how it could be made one way in the future when we need it to serve Phases Four and Five. And it would be one way as to the Corolla Boat Club.
Mr. This is
This is if DOT approves it, is that correct? If DOT So if they don't approve, if they never approve it, then that's not even going to happen.
So that's not going to happen. And we would have to find some other way to access Phases Four and Five. But what you see here is that with this plan, we wouldn't be changing anything related to the Grandy Farm Market, other than formalizing the parking and the driveway through there in a way that's kind of similar to the way it was on their approved site plan twenty-plus years ago. The dark, you know, the dark shading shows the, the driveway all through there, the parking shows the parking spaces on both sides of it, which is actually the way it And the next slide is a, a blow-up of that, showing how that would work within the Corolla Boat Club part of it. So you see coming out of the commercial site, there is a concrete island there that forces tr- uh, traffic to turn left as opposed to going straight, uh, and up through the farm market. And then likewise, the exits from the, um, from the paddleboat rentals and from the commercial on the other side of the lake, would, would be required to make left turns there instead of right turns.
Where's the farm market, where's the farm market in that again?
Uh, where it says Bissell on the map.
Okay.
You're just seeing the beginning of the
Okay.
Of that parking on the, on the right side of the slide there. So in this way, we would be not putting any traffic onto Sunset Boulevard from, from the development that we're, that we're establishing here. So I think that may, may help accomplish what you're trying to accomplish. But, you know, we suggested a decision on this being deferred until, you know, DOT is in a position to make a decision on it. Right now, because of DOT's position, we don't know if they will approve the connection to and through the right-of-way the way we're showing it here.
So where does DOT's begin and you end? The green areas, uh, is your property, I guess, line?
Um, yeah, there's our property line right there.
Okay.
At the, at the top up there, that was a property line?
Yes.
Outside the green?
Yeah, some of the green is on the DOT property.
So, uh,
The paddleboat, air parking area that you see is on Monterey Shores property, the, right, so the, the property line kind of, the DOT property line zigzags around in there.
It's doing a lot of juking in there. Um, so just to, just to clarify, if you never receive permission from DOT, then I guess four and five would never have, four and five are your phases across the pond, right, the back up to Timbuk II?
Well, we have to come in for a plan amendment to access those in a different way.
I got you, okay.
So if that, if that DOT right-of-way never happens, then you'll, then the first phases will only have that one point of entry, correct?
Correct. And the traffic analysis report indicates that that's fine.
All right, thank you.
Could we go back to, um, the first, that one right there, yeah? So we talked about the boardwalk last time and made a, uh, a case for not building that with the first phase. We're proposing to build, as you see on here, the walkway that's behind the lots that connected to the commercial lot, but, uh, deferring the construction of the boardwalk that, uh, goes to the boat basin, uh, until the boat basin is done in Phase Three. We actually have a CAMA major permit application getting ready to go in for the boat basin. But it, it is going to involve a variance from what they will typically apply or approve for just a, you know, approve a six-foot boardwalk three feet off the, above the marsh is a fairly easy permit, but, um, what we're proposing is a wider boardwalk, uh, that's higher, that will accommodate, um, golf cart traffic and so forth. And so if we get a, you know, we don't want to apply for a permit for something that we aren't planning to build, or it could jeopardize the permit for what we do want to build.
And you indicated, I believe it's our last meeting, that you felt like that was, uh, not that lengthy a process, that it would be maybe six months or something like that, or by the time you, you got into actually developing the lot, that you should know something? Because the staff wants you to apply for that now, right?
Well, right. Um, and, and we're getting ready to apply for it. They, um, the staff wants us to, to have a permit as a condition of moving forward with construction, basically, with this phase.
Right. On Phase One, on, on what's before us tonight, right?
You know, if, if it's part of the social use permit, then it needs to have a permit as part of the construction drawing review to move forward.
Okay.
and without the boat docks, there's no real good use for it, it's kind of a, it's not a beautiful shoreline, it's kind of a muddy But we want something that's really nice out there, we're going to do it first class. Uh, it's going to take probably, in answer to your other question, they have a seventy-five day review period.
Okay.
And they have up to seventy-five days additional to respond to any issues that come up.
But, but there's no, during that review phase, I guess there's no guarantee that they would approve what you want to do? Is that, is that CAMA, is that what you just said?
We know they'll approve something, it's just a matter of getting a yes CAMA.
Okay, but, okay, but you're going to apply for something larger, you said, correct?
Applying for something larger.
They may just come back and say no.
And we, and we may have to back off of some of the things that we're proposing.
Okay.
Now, uh, oh, one of the other components to that was the walkway on the back of the property lines, when will that?
That will be constructed with the first phase.
And that boardwalk that's behind it, that, in the short term, before the boardwalk is built, that will lead to the, uh, restaurant and event space?
It will. And rather than a boardwalk, we're proposing that to be actually a concrete walk, you know, like a multi-use path, basically. And there is a third relatively minor issue, but we, we need to discuss it. And that is, uh, you know, it's been requested that we do testing and determine if Malia Drive meets NC DOT construction standards, which we agreed to do. We have an issue regarding the timing of that, those improvements. The condition in your staff report that is recommended is that this be done, um, in advance of receiving construction approval for the project. But we instead would like to propose a condition that, uh, says that we're going to agree to a stipulation that conformance to DOT standards will be reconfirmed as a part of the subdivision road construction process. And the reason for that is that it has to do with timing and expense and the cost, if, if it's determined that additional pavement is needed to bring that up to DOT standards. And by the way, that road has been used for, you know, twenty, thirty years to access development back in there, but, but it is actually still owned by this developer, so it's really part But, but it is actually still owned by this developer, so it's really part of this project. And he would bring it up to state code if, if anything doesn't meet the code in connection with construction of the development. Otherwise, he would have to mobilize a testing crew and potentially mobilize a paving crew to do just a small amount of asphalt work. And we've gotten an estimate of a fifteen thousand dollar mobilization cost just to mobilize that paving crew. And we would like to do it just once rather than twice.
So when do you anticipate that improvement would take place then?
So that would take place in connection with the paving of the, of the road in phase one.
Right.
And if it needs a, if it needs an overlay, then that overlay would be done at the same time.
No, it's definitely going to need it. The thing's in bad shape. Uh, okay, and that will occur when you start building houses, I guess?
Prior to file plat approval for the first phase.
Okay.
Chairman, could I, would, I had a question for staff. I'm going to be appropriate time or not, just to get, to ask their views or concerns with this change. Would it be now be a good time to, while we're on that?
Well, I think Ms. Turner said she would, she'd like to rebut their stuff when they get done.
Okay, well, okay, we can do it then. Okay, that's fine.
And that's all I have. I'd be glad to answer any more questions.
Uh, can you, what, okay, so phase one was five houses, right, and concrete walkway? And then, uh.
It was five plus commercial, wasn't it?
And the commercial, sorry, yeah, I was jotting down. That's why I'm going through this again, so. Uh, phase two was your multifamily portion of it? And then, and three is when you were talking about doing boat, boat basin and walkway?
Right, and the reason for that is really the, we're going to bring the multifamily right behind the first phase.
Okay.
And we may not be through the CAMA, well, likely would not be through the CAMA permitting process yet for the, for the boat basin.
Okay. All right.
Can I make another comment or question, Mr. So with the first phases that you're planning on proposing? And if all that gets built and you never get that, oh, the right of way, don't, wouldn't you think that that's going to be a lot of traffic on that one road in and out? If you don't have that second entry in? Or you, are you planning on that?
No, and, and that's why we had the traffic consultant look at it both ways. They determined that you can get safe ingress and egress at the Amelia Drive connection to NC twelve without the other. That's the testimony that.
Yeah, he testified to that.
Yeah, okay, that's why I forgot about that one.
I questioned him about it specifically because I'm the one that really wants one way in from Sunset. Because that intersection is terrible. I don't care what time of year they look at it. It's terrible. So inbound is fine, outbound is not so fine on Sunset Boulevard, so, uh. Okay. Any other questions for sure? Come on, should we hear? All right, thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
John Morrison.
Yes, sir.
For the applicant.
Mr. Bissell, if you'd come back up here, please. First, as to the letter you got from DOT, uh, we would like to offer that in evidence. I agree it is hearsay, but you are not binding by the same rules as District and Superior Court. If you find it is inherently reliable and it's not the be all, end all of the whole case. Then you can take it into consideration, but I'm not going to argue with your counsel. We're just tendering it in case another court reviews what you do. Secondly, I think it would be admissible. This is the third time we've been here, I think, and, and Mr. Bissell is a sworn witness, and he's talked repeatedly about, without objection, that DOT wouldn't make a decision one way or other this time. So this, and, and thirdly, we did what the board asked us to do, and, and so we would just mark that for introduction and evidence. Now, the other thing I want, Mr. Bissell, you've talked about a number of things that the staff would prefer you do. Like bringing the road up to DOT standards, putting in the boardwalk and all of those kinds of things. Is there anything in the Kirtuk County Unified Development Ordinance that requires you to do that? Or is that simply staff suggestion and staff preference?
Well, the ordinance requires that we connect to a DOT road or a road that's been approved to DOT standards. But it doesn't stipulate that it needs to be done prior to anything else being done.
Okay, all right.
And as to the other matters as well, the boardwalk?
And the boardwalk as well.
Thank you, I have no other questions.
Uh, just to ask you, Mr. Bissell, so just to clarify, at the end of phase one, or at, at some point when you begin construction, you're going to be paving the road anyway. Will it receive a preliminary pave and then a final pave at the end of three? After we've got all the heavy equipment moving in and out, or is it just going to be one shot for paving?
It's a good question. We actually hadn't, um.
Yeah.
Probably one shot.
Okay.
Rick Willis.
Right, come on up, Rick. Uh, Mr. Willis, so, uh, we swore you on last time, right? So, uh, you, uh, so you'll be paving this road. When exactly do you anticipate paving it?
Well, since construction's complete, we go straight to paving and we do all of it, anything that's required for Amelia Drive, which is probably top dressing. And I agree with you, it, it, you know, the condition is suspect. But the other, the other point is you don't want to finish something and then run a bunch of construction traffic over it while you're building the rest of the project.
Right.
It ought to be done as one.
Well, that's why I was asking. I've seen neighborhoods where they've done a, you know, a preliminary laydown and then they come back and do a top grade on it after they're done unloading equipment and then construction.
Well, the preliminary typically has a lot larger of an aggregate.
Right, right.
As part of the asphalt base.
Right.
That's what, that's the load bearing capability.
Right.
And normally that's not done in one shot because you, it's multiple types of mixes that go down on it.
So that's why I'm asking, uh, it, it, that's weird we're hung up on asphalt this, in this particular project, but.
Is there a road now?
The Amelia Drive is where you go back to Monterey Pond's apartments. So that is existing. You take a left behind the, the golf course, basically, to enter this project. And right now, it's just a sand lot with trees on it, so he's going to have to do.
I don't, I don't know. Is the intent to do heavy construction on a sand road? I mean.
Or gravel.
You said that you were going to pave in one shot, that.
Well, Mark's telling me that there's a process that's approved in Kirtuk County where we could do base and then come back with a, a top coat. That makes more sense, probably.
We have, we have to have a paved road in order to get a record with, with the lots.
Okay.
There are two different ways to do it. One is a two-course pavement where you have a, a base course and a, and a surface course. The other possible way to do it is a three-course pavement where you have a base course and an intermediate course, a surface course. And we have done on occasion, put a, left the surface course off.
Right.
And you can go to record with, and DOT will allow that, will approve that. And you just leave it an inch or an inch and a half low for your final surface course to come back.
Right, the finish.
So we'll probably do that, to revise my answer.
Okay, well, that's, that's what we're getting to because it will be part of a motion tonight, if there is a motion for approval.
Yes, sir.
Um, so want to get whatever everybody's comfortable with because you have to agree to any motion we may put forward tonight, so. So it'll be a two, a, a two-stage, I'm guessing, then, would be.
Multi-stage.
Or multi-stage.
Yeah, yes. Now, if they go three, they can, they can give them the flexibility to do three.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to follow up on the conversation you just had and the Mr. Bissell's request to change staff review in comment number six from prior to approval of the construction drawings to prior to final plat approval, I believe, is what he's asking for. So if that's something the board would like to change that to, I think that the project can still meet the ordinance with that change to the condition at this point. Back to just kind of the prior hearing and my understanding of what staff was going to be looking into to bring to you. Some answers that I wasn't sure of at the time when discussion came up about the one-way street and interconnectivity. And then what changes could potentially be made without having to kind of go back and re-look at that amended sketch plan that was approved back in October. And so in doing that, I firstly looked at what our ordinance says about one-way streets. And I think the question was if that Curry Lane extension, which is that extension over the pond, is conditioned to be one-way. Does it meet the internal street connectivity requirement? And yes, it, it can meet that, so that change may be allowed. And, and can meet the, be used to meet the requirement of that minimum index score in the ordinance. And just remember, if that is the desired condition, to craft that condition related to the subject property, the, the portion on the property being one-way. And I also just wanted to remind the board, especially now after seeing Mr. Bissell's phasing plan, that the condition of the amended sketch plan when this was originally approved suggested that prior to approval of construction drawings, proposed access and configuration through the DOT owned parcel shall be approved by DOT or Turnpike Authority as appropriate. We feel like that condition, we still support that condition. I think it's important to this project. Then there was a question about if the street connection across the pond is not constructed or approved. Can this project meet the internal street connectivity requirement? And it cannot. This is important to meet that, that requirement. And so it does not meet that. The applicant mentioned at the prior hearing about a section of the ordinance that talks about reduction in the minimum index score. On to meet that section of the ordinance, we need to see a revised sketch plan that shows a new layout of roads without the connection. And the board can make a decision as to whether to apply that standard to this property. Again, this was a, a plan that was developed by the applicant based on their desires for the property. And it was, and so therefore it's being reviewed under what was approved, what was presented was approved with some conditions. It's being reviewed to make sure that it's installed in accordance with that review and approval. And so that, that condition is important. One other thing to note on Mr. Bissell's phasing plan that he presented tonight. He showed me a few minutes before the meeting took place, but I was able to kind of think about that. Again, you're seeing the connection across the pond that is required for interconnectivity for this preliminary plat is not being proposed with the phase that they're, they're asking for approval for. And in the, uh, in the approved amended sketch plan, it, it says that that would be approved prior to preliminary, uh, proposed access and configuration through the DOT owned parcel shall be approved by DOT or Turnpike Authority as appropriate and by county staff through the preliminary plat special use permit. That's this process or the major site plan review process. I will also let you know that we have currently a major site plan under review for those townhomes. Also has that interconnectivity requirement. Staff will also be reviewing that portion of the project subject to this connection being required. I think that that covered, um, my response to Mr. Bissell's plan that he presented tonight, as well as the information that you had requested.
Okay.
Staff bring to you at the last meeting.
Thank you. Um, I, so one of the things that occurred to me in the meeting is why I brought it up. Obviously, we were, I, I wanted to see a one-way in, um, but there's no interconnectivity in Corolla. I mean, I get it for the mainland, right, but this would literally be the only neighborhood that has interconnectivity. Everything else is Bud. Um, it, it. And I get, it, I guess there's, is there no flexibility allowed in this kind of situation? I mean, it is literally, it, there's no, it's connecting to another, actually another private property. In this case, or, or through DOT property, and if they don't want to allow it, um, I guess, is it, is it?
I would suggest that, that, that the phasing be changed to include the connection to the property line with this phase of the development.
Well, I think the reason they did that, if I'm not mistaken, is we had a very lengthy conversation and concerns about traffic coming across that bridge to nowhere, golf carts, bicycles, pedestrians to an empty lot that went nowhere. And, and it seems to me stopping it at a natural stop point, which would be the turn into the commercial component here at this particular phase makes much more sense than having a bridge to nowhere, especially if they come back in phase three and four and have to change their, their layout to, if they don't receive the permission they were after. They have to change their layout, approach in on the pond or, or do something to that effect to affect a roadway over to the other commercial component. It just seems more natural to me to, to occur at that point. I mean, is that, does that make sense? Am I, am I wrong?
It may make sense, but it was not the plan that was put forward. And also, that's going to be a real challenge with reviewing the other part of the project, which is the major site plan that's subject to the amended sketch plan and not this process.
Mr. Chairman, could I?
Yes, sir.
Just the county staff, um, so if, if we disregard the interconnectability portion for this project, would we then be open to, um, other projects on the mainland or other parts of the county with the same, that may have the same concerns at some point, that we could ignore it then as well? Or is, I mean, I guess the point I'm making is, are we going to start making exceptions or are we bound to what we stated for interconnectabilities?
Come on up to the podium, we'll, uh.
What we're proposing here is really not unusual. We do, we have phased development plans all the time on the mainland where you're interconnecting road. Doesn't get built in the first phase. It may get built in the second, third, fourth, fifth phase. And yet those projects are all determined to meet the connectivity score, even though they're not actually built until later. And so I would, you know, offer that.
I think the difference.
Though we're not building it with this phase, it's still, the project meets the score.
But a difference is, uh, like the fifty-five plus community guys did up in Mayau. It had multiple entrances in and out, and it may have gone to a farmer's field, but eventually, you know, the, you basically owned your ability to put, put it in for future use.
To the field, yes.
Right, to the field. And, and so it's accepted that in the future, you know, something, at some point, that field will probably be developed. And, and at some point, it may connect or interconnect to a new neighborhood, if it's a neighborhood that goes there, but it allows for that possibility. In this case, you can't physically do it because you're hemmed in by DOT property.
But we can still build it to the DOT property line.
But that's not connecting it.
Well, but it doesn't have to.
But it doesn't have to, it has the ability.
So.
To be connected. Same to agree that a farm field is.
Right, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I'm understanding correctly, you're asking if it's even a requirement to do that because there is no interconnectivity foreseeable in a locked property like this. So, so is your perspective, are we making the applicant jump through hoops to do something that will never be, never come to fruition? And thereby saying, would you do it a different way, given the option? Is, is that?
That's kind of where I was at, but I, I asked actually if it was, what if it was a cul-de-sac? What if it was a one-way in? Which is, you know, one way in, one way out, which if they didn't have a bridge across the pond and they didn't have any connectivity to the DOT property, that's exactly what it would be. It would not have an interconnectivity score.
It also would not be unique.
Right, and that, and that, and, and Corolla or other parts of the county. And I, and I understand when, when they put the interconnectivity in, it was to help deal with traffic issues on the mainland. And it fell to the beach and, and, and probably a more sweeping. But it doesn't make sense in Corolla where everything there is a planned unit development. There is no interconnectivity. It's private neighborhoods. Some of them are, are even restricted access neighborhoods, gated communities. So it may be that we'd have to change UDO, basically, for Corolla to, to, to deal with this. But I, I, I'm just having a hard time with the emphasis of the interconnectivity because it's not, it'd be nice to have it in Corolla, but it's not really a thing. You know, you got.
Well, it'd be unique.
Right.
You know, the, the most late, the most recent version of Corolla Lite, for example, that's beside Rick, your property. That's, there is no interconnectivity with that, and it's just. just.
Well, it's what it is. It goes to Hampton Inn, and then they have a way out onto, directly onto 12. So.
I'm talking about the one by the water tower.
Oh, Corolla Lite. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. I was focusing on Pond Island, the new section.
So, so the question to you, Mark, is, is this the way?
Have, have they done anything at that property?
Like Beacon Hill, Beacon Hill, for instance, it ties in to the little, it has interconnectivity to.
Beacon Hill does, yes.
So, there is some.
And the other one, the other one, by the lighthouse ramp.
There's one other piece here that this, and this is actually showing it. You know, some of these changes to this layout are not related to this preliminary plat.
Right.
Okay? We're just talking about the subdivision. This development was approved through the sketch plan process. So, like, these turns for these other properties, these other projects, for instance, this boat project and this commercial with, with units above will be, will be reviewed under different processes. The, the units, potentially just a major, a major site plan that doesn't have any board approval. Of course, we talked about the paddle boat or the outdoor recreation does need another special use permit. So, prior to that being built, you will see that. So, just throwing that out there, that, you know, some of the things we're talking about here in this phasing plan that you're seeing isn't related to this subdivision. We're talking about the subdivision, which is a piece of how to approve this full development. It's a, it's a complex development.
As far as the special use permit condition on getting DOT approval, you know, I would offer that we are going to be back at least twice and probably three times for special use permits, one for outdoor entertainment, one for outdoor recreation, possibly two for outdoor recreation between, between the paddle boats and the boat basin, if they're done at different times. And I think that the requirement to get DOT approval can, can be done with a future phase and doesn't necessarily have to be done. I don't think it stipulates that it has to be done with the first phase.
But, Mr. Bissell, you keep making a comment, you're assuming that DOT is going to approve it. I mean, what I'm hearing from you is you're going to keep applying for it, but they still, they may never approve this.
And if that's the case.
Yeah, that is.
Then we would definitely have to amend the plan.
Yes. And, but I guess what I keep going back in is, what staff was reporting to us is that what was laid out, the staff presented to the staff, the public comments, all that was based on this plan that showed you the connectivity piece and that road going in there.
But if they totally turn it down, then we qualify for the exception to the connectivity score.
But my understanding is we can't get that right now. Is that, was that what you just said earlier?
You, you may need a amended sketch plan if they turn it down. I mean.
That's what he said.
This was the, this, right, right.
Yeah, Mark said if they turn it down, they're going to have to come back in for amended sketch plan to get to the next, last, the final phases of construction.
And the connectivity score then becomes moot.
Okay. So, if we do phase one and build the bridge to create the interconnectivity, which is what staff would like to see at this point, right? What about the other phasing of the, the walkway, for instance? I mean, they bring a valid point to the table that they want to do. I believe you wanted that prior to final plat?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay. And is that final, is final plat for the entire project or final plat for phase one? We got different plats happening, right? Recordings happening?
Well, that would just, that's the thing, is that the, there's only, these six lots are the subdivision.
Okay.
That's the only subdivision component to this plan.
Well, you don't make it easy, Mark. I'll tell you that every time you come in here.
Could you not tie that into the next phase?
That's kind of what I'm thinking because I, I think it's a reasonable request that they, they intend to build it and would have to have, have to do so before the next phase ties in. That's kind of where I was going with that.
So, before the townhouses?
Yes. Or during construction of the townhouses, I guess. When they come in for that process that they're going to have to fish or cut bait on the pier for phase two, which is the multifamily.
So, would the boardwalk, walkway area have to be completed before approval of phase two? Is that what we're saying here? Or in conjunction with phase two?
I think in conjunction, they'll have, they should, at that point, have an answer as to whether or not they can do the 10-foot wide that they want.
The walkway can be part of phase one that, that goes behind the lots and then.
It's the pier, it's the pier dock work that.
The boardwalk dock work.
Yeah, the boardwalk portion of it, you want to, you basically need more time to get approval for what you want to build.
Yes.
Right.
So, it would be in conjunction with construction of phase two, not prior to phase two? Is that the wording that we're going with?
I would think so. I mean, when we, when they go to phase two, they're going to have to come back in and see us, right?
It's tricky because we don't come back in to see you with phase two. That's a TRC approval.
Well, then it'd be staff.
Because it's a zero lot line development. So.
Could we not tie it to TRC approval?
See, we actually have a TRC under review with staff, but, you know, this is obviously going to be a sticking point.
Mr. Attorney, you look like you want to comment regarding TRC?
Well, I mean, that, that's, this is also a component of the major site plan. Because even though there's approval processes that are independent, some of the projects overlap. Some of the requirements are overlapping, like the walkway. This is a project that was designed to have water access for the residents and users of the site. And phase one and two is the bulk of the, of those users. And so, staff feels like that needs to go in. With the, with the townhomes, it would be part of a major site plan approval.
Okay.
With this project, it would be prior to a final plat with the, with the subdivision piece that we're talking about tonight.
Our contention has been, since we've got a permitting component associated with the dock, which is affecting the timing of it, and since it's not a requirement in Currituck County of a major site plan to have a dock, it doesn't make sense to put that requirement before final plat approval or as a condition of final plat approval. So, there's no dock required in a subdivision in Currituck County.
No, but it is something you proposed.
And I'm going to provide it.
So, I think the problem is we've been burned in the past. Not to say you're going to be the guy that does it, but I think it's, it makes sense for us to cross our Ts and dotted Is to ensure that that will be built and that component is there for the Corolla Boat Club.
Did we not do this with Camp Currituck? When they wanted that, we made them get the camera permits first to make sure that they would do their docking all out there. We, we presented that. I think, didn't we do that? When the people came before us with Camp Currituck, we stipulation.
Cape Currituck.
Or, whatever, Cape Currituck, excuse me.
I was with you.
Yeah, we, we, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, Cape Currituck, we, we put that stipulation that the camera permits had to be before they could get started because we wanted to ensure that that was being done. And they never, that never came to fruition, so.
No, they couldn't get their, they had a problem with their dredging.
Because they wanted to go ahead and build the, the lots first. And so, that's why we did that then.
Yes, I believe you did have some specific conditions that would need to take place for each phase of that project.
But, but isn't the risk really the developer's risk that he might be leaving money on the table when he sells the units because the dock's not in place yet?
We've seen some unscrupulous people before. Not pointing fingers, Rick. So, you know, through the years, you guys have built top-notch projects always with Corolla Lite and several of the other projects you've been involved with, so.
Well, and I'll point out, you know, you talked about this is a complicated project. This is a complicated project because it's a legacy project in a PUD from 1987. So, the original approvals are all based on that original approval. That's why the number is still an 87 number for the project. But we have gone into a new ordinance that is giving us a specific way that we're supposed to approach this as a legacy PUD. And it's made it very complicated. I'd be happy if we just had one approval process for the multifamily consistent with how we all always did multifamily. And how we always did lots, if it all worked the same. But it's, we're trying to work with a old PUD approval and system into the, into this new UDO. But it, it has made it complicated.
Yes, it has.
If, as far as like providing the, the dock as a condition of final plat approval, since that is, requires the issuance of a camera permit, I don't want to propose just a dock that would be acceptable and not what the project really deserves because I can get it permitted easier. And I don't know that it makes sense to provide a bond. I mean, I haven't, we haven't.
I don't think you can provide a bond until you have a permit.
So, I'm kind of caught in that catch 22. And it, it doesn't make sense to me that you have a subdivision that is going to have a dock, and you can't have the subdivision approved to get any cash flow until you actually get the dock.
Right. Well, I think that's what Mike was hitting on, the camera, camera approval versus building are two different things, right? We, before, that you have a camera approval in hand before final plat, and then you can, you can build from that point forward, right? Then you're moving forward on the entire, you know, the project. You've sold lots. You're, you're into the subdivision phase of this. And, and that's, we've done it before, and I think that there's a reasonable approach to ensuring that the, the dock gets built.
And that, and that's exactly what we did with Cape Currituck is, they presented that waterfront property with boat launches and docks, and it was part of their proposal to us. So, we made the stipulation, we changed it to get that camera permit upfront to ensure that it was, and I think it was going to be phase one, that they had to do that and get the camera permit. So, we would ensure that they weren't just going to go in there and build lots and then come back there and say, oh, we couldn't get the camera permit, so we got to do away with that now. And then we get built. So, we did that, and of course, they couldn't get it or whatever happened.
Right, whatever happened, what happened.
Never went through. So, and that's kind of where I was going with this, is, I mean, what happens if you start building this and they can't get the camera approval? Something happens, then, then it doesn't get built.
Right.
The concern I have, you know, obviously, we're in here for approval for, for start of construction. And if we made the dock a condition of the final plat approval, then I could end up doing all the construction, just sort of as you're saying. And if I don't have the approval of the state to build the dock, or if I, if you were to say that the dock had to be complete as a condition of final plat, that'd be a, you couldn't start construction until you had it. So, I couldn't build anything really until I had a dock or at least the permit.
I think what we're asking for is a permit, not a physical structure.
I think that's what Steph, you wanted to get the camera permit, correct? Does that? Want to make sure that that's what one of the conditions.
You wanted the dock improvement as part of the subdivision.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think a happy medium is having a permit in hand before final plat.
But if, with construction drawings, that's not gonna, that timing doesn't work. The permit's going to have to be with the construction drawings, which is the next step. So, it's a matter of, if the board wants to require the water access component for these lots that are going to be going to record as a requirement of those lots or not. And it has to do with timing, yes. Because I believe they would like a wider dock for some other uses that they're proposing in the future. But in the interim, the 36 or 30 units that they're proposing between this project and the major site plan, those dwelling units won't have water access, which was part of their, 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 their project that they proposed to the board.
Okay. Can we require that that dock be built before they move into phase two, the multifamily?
Well, they.
No, that they, they begin the construction of the dock before they move into phase, their phase two, before they begin construction of the multifamily, they must have, they have to begin construction of the dock.
But what if you, I mean, like you said, if he gets a permit, I mean, like you said, if he's, if it was completed before phase two, like he said too, Rick said, I mean, it could be, you know, a simple, I mean, they, if they want to do, I mean, like I said, getting the permit or whatever is one thing. I mean, but like if he wanted to, you know, be a Cadillac dock or, you know, we, we wouldn't want to limit it, you know, both ways, I guess, maybe is what I'm thinking of.
And we're hoping they get the camera permit.
Here's the problem.
There's no guarantee on anything.
Here's the problem I have with comparing this with Cape, Cape Currituck. Cape Currituck, its entire central feature, it, the whole thing was sold and focused on the marina, the boat ramp, the docks, the piers, the whatever. And when you look at that, that's what it had going for it. That includes proximity to the H2OBX. If, if this development didn't have access to the water, I would almost bet you that all those units would sell anyway. In other words, access to the water is not going to make or break this. Whereas in Cape Coral, that's, that, or I'm sorry, Cape, Cape Currituck, that was, I mean, that was the central feature.
That was the major.
This is, you know, this is outer banks.
Well, the flip side of that is that they brought this forward to us, as Jenny said several times, this is their plan, their idea of how to do it. Now, staff has proposed getting this, this walkway done to ensure that it gets done and not just left out there in limbo and it never gets built. And they have sold the occupants a bill of goods at that point as well.
I think we'd be okay with what you proposed in having the issuance of the camera permit a condition of getting the first building permit in phase two.
And Jenny, you were going to say there was a problem with that. What were you going to say about that?
I just, I think that this is, this is the preliminary plat for the subdivision for the six lots and the infrastructure for those lots. Phase two, the major site plan is a separate permitting process.
Right, in a separate phase.
The sketch plan would be the time to make conditions about the other phases on this plan that you're seeing.
What if when they get the permit in hand, they bond it? Can it be done at that time?
They could. I, I believe the challenge is, is that they, they, would that work for you?
So, I'm, I'm trying to keep up. So, you're talking about get, getting a bond when we have the permit that covers the cost of the construction of the dock.
Yes, sir.
For phase two.
I believe it would be for phase one, which is what we're talking about, the subdivision.
Well, I, it doesn't make sense to me that the dock is a condition of the development of, of lots for much of the same reason that you were saying. You can put the lots on the outer banks, and the question as to whether the dock will matter to those people is a, is a moot point.
But you would use it as a selling feature, would you not?
Yes. And I have legal requirements I have to meet to do that. I mean, I intend, we're applying for a long dock that gets us out to four feet of water. And this became a big debate, you know, that I've talked about. We have it out there.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm, you know, I'm concerned about getting it started under construction. Not, if, if they had to build it ahead of time, that's going to take months, potentially.
The dock and basin is really more of a central feature for the commercial development. We're talking about the restaurant, the outdoor venue, people being able to get their bike boat.
Didn't that phase one?
Yeah.
No, that's, well, now, we'll be back with an outdoor venue, special use permit request before we do the restaurant. We're just creating the lot now.
But it, it's a commercial lot.
It's a commercial lot.
So, was your intent probably with, I guess, the commercial property there, selling that feature that you'd be able to get a lot of boat traffic in there as well too then with venues and everything?
That's all right.
And if that doesn't happen. And if that doesn't happen, then that goes south too then probably.
Well, I think the-
If that goes south, then it's just a regular restaurant.
The construction of a dock with real water on it, on the outer banks, which I know Currituck County's been trying to do for the last 35, 40 years is, would be a huge attribute to the outer banks. There is no place to get a boat.
Oh, absolutely.
Most of the time.
But the question is-
I guess the question is then too is, is if and when you would get a CAMA permit and what size they would build? And then how's that going to defer, uh, to preliminary Phase 1, I believe, correct? Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
What I'm, what I'm struggling with is, you know, here's a plan, it's going to include a dock, it's going to go out to deep water, and that's going to be an amazing feature. And what I'm struggling with is it will impact, although I'm not even sure, sales of the lots and the commercial, right? It, whether or not that pier goes in, but that's his loss, not the county's loss. And, you know, s- suggesting that we want to make sure everything's going to happen, including that pier, or he needs to come back and start all over without a pier to do exactly the same thing up here. I mean, I gotta-
I was going to say, without the DOT, right now, he, he had to come back without the premier and without the DOT right of way, which is probably negative. So, you're right, he'd have to come back with a whole new development as a cul-de-sac with a commercial development at the end, which would be a whole new design, the criteria to look at, correct?
Well, I meant the sketch plan.
For that part, yes. I mean, I think ultimately it boils down to, does the board want to see that water access constructed with the subdivision?
You know, that, that's, that is the question.
And it is over open space, that's part of the subdivision.
Do we want the whole thing to be stopped until we can guarantee to be able to get that?
But they presented that to us.
I, I get that, but this is a classic example of-
No flexibility.
You know, government being government, and by God, if you don't do exactly what's on this paper, we don't want to see you again. To, we would approve, I would think, I missed the last meeting, sorry. If it didn't include a pier, we'd be interested in approving that.
Right.
And we'd have to ignore the interconnectivity piece too with UDO.
Mike, I'm, I'm not, I'm not ignoring that, I'm just putting, I'm, we're, we're trying to put up a roadblock from a county perspective because it doesn't have a CAMA permit, or we want to hold the whole project hostage for a CAMA permit, that that is a serious pier. That's going to take a little longer than your off-the-bulkhead into muddy water type pier. That's a, I mean, five feet of water, that's, that's, that's a, that's a project.
And I, I've had that same kind of conversation with staff because as the developer of Crowl Light, if we had to work under these types of issues with Crowl Light, it wouldn't have happened. There's no way that we could have dealt with these type of constraints in the development of the oceanfront swimming pools, in the development of the sound front amenities in Crowl Light. We got the lots developed, got some cash flow going, we spent $7 million on, you know, that, that project and that money had to come from the development of the project.
And, and we've done, and I'll use university apartments as an example, right? The recreational facilities had to come in with a later phase so that they could get buildings, get units under construction, get some revenue coming in, and that allowed and permitted them to go down that path. So, I completely get it, right? It, I guess, at the end of the day, to me, and I don't have a decision in the matter, or a say in the matter, we would approve it without the pier. We'd love to see the pier, I think you would want to see the pier.
Yes, sir.
So, we're all motivated to do that, okay, then. Yeah.
Bottom line, with or without the pier, it's going to increase the tax base.
Exactly.
Okay, the problem is, the problem is how to get from A to B. It is, and, you know, the interconnectivity thing, uh, you know, if, if that's a big deal, then they can build the bridge across the, the, and, and connect to DOT property like they would any other residential subdivision and for a future, future hookup, if, if, if and when that happens. Uh, if it doesn't, they have to come back in for an amended site plan and hang a, hang a sharp right or, or do whatever. So, I guess the, the, the hard part is, at this point, figuring out this, how to get this pier phased in appropriately so that everyone is comfortable.
Thank you.
Thank you for sneezing in the lens, sir.
And so, I'm, I'm at a loss at this moment, how to get from A to B, how to get this pier phased in to make our staff happy and the applicant happy. Well, I am going to take a brief recess, uh, and, um- All right, yep, let's take, let's take, uh, take five or 10, we'll, we'll come back in a few minutes and work on it some more. All right, everyone, a little break there, let's get back into it. So, uh, what'd you talk about, Mark?
Well, we're, we're comfortable with the idea of tying the, um, permitting of the dock to the construction approval of the multifamily Phase, Phase 2.
Okay.
So, tying that into Phase 2, that what you just said, I'm sorry?
So, that could, so that, yeah, so that would basically become part of Phase 2.
So, permitting and construction.
Well, the, so, well, with that stipulation, I think the construction plans to move forward with construction of Phase 2 couldn't proceed until the dock permit was issued and then, um-
Okay, I, I get what you're saying. Ms. Turner?
So, he said, so, Mark, you're suggesting that with the major site plan that's currently under review for the townhome portion, that that's when the connection would be made, the dock?
Right, we would amend that plan and typically the way you do it is you issue a site plan tentative approval until the permits are in place. Water sewer, um, state, state stormwater and CAMA, right?
Set.
And would that be what you showed on this preliminary plat would be part of that major site plan? Is that correct? So, in other words, it's-
We would amend the major site plan to include the dock.
Because one other thing to note is this dock that actually goes out into the water is not what was requested to be built for this phase, it was to the edge of the water, right?
Right.
Meaning the preliminary plat, the subdivision, it was access to the water was what they were going to construct. So, that's still what you're saying, you're going to construct that through the major site plan process with the multifamily portion of this, okay?
The whole dock is what we're talking about, right? We're talking about getting the permit for the entire dock, not just for one that accesses the water.
All the way till where your boat base scenario would be.
Right, exactly, is that what you meant?
Oh, so you're saying you're going to get the whole dock permitted?
We're saying we'll just put the dock into this phase.
Okay, it's even better.
That, and then the question would be, at what point?
With the permit in the dock.
If we get, if we get the permit for the dock, do we have to have the dock constructed to sell a unit? Or not? In other words, can we be under construction?
I, 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 I think that was my point earlier, yeah, that you would be under construction during Phase 2. Both would, 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 would can go together at the same time. You're, the multi-phase is going to take a little while, the multifamily is going to take a little while, uh, the dock construction is going to take a little while.
So, the dock could be constructed-
Being built with the multi-phase.
In conjunction with Phase 2.
Right, so it could, it would be in place maybe before you get the CO for the first unit.
Yes, perfect.
Okay. He offered it. Mark! So, you're saying that you're committing, Rick?
Yes, sir.
That the dock will be done before the first CO?
In the multifamily phase.
In Phase 2. You're com- and let me just, let me just, before you answer that question, before you answer that question, right?
Yes, sir.
The statement was made, you're the ones that put that big a pier out there, you're the ones that had, so, don't do something that you're going to regret in a year.
Well, what you said was not exactly what I understood Commissioner White to say. In other words, we'll have the permit for the, for the, the CAMA permit for the dock and all the permits for the dock to get a building permit, is the way I think about it. And to my way of thinking, and my question that I asked is, do I have to have the final construction of the dock to get a CO? I'm, I'm not sure that makes sense, it makes sense to me that-
That's a good statement.
But the dock will be under construction.
Right, my, my point is that the dock, the dock is, is under construction during Phase 2.
I just don't want, Mark, agreeing to stuff that we're all going to regret.
Yeah, I'm not sure that everybody agreed what we were-
Yeah, Mark's, he's, he's quick.
Santa Claus.
Okay.
Okay, but, but, okay, but it'll be, okay. That's, that's better.
I told you, all right.
Change this one, I hope.
Okay. Ms. Turner, can you live with this process, where we're at now, what we're discussing? Does that make sense from a staff perspective?
I believe that what the board's discussing is consistent with the plan that was set forth, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, the other component of this, we're going to, you know, it was myself that brought up the bridge coming over and concerns due to the interconnectivity, um, you guys were okay with building that before. I think we need to put that back in and leave it for future use, just like you would any other residential neighborhood on the mainland, as you alluded to, Mark, that even if it goes to some other piece of property and it, and it may not ever be connected, uh, you got to have the interconnectivity.
Well, could it be part of our construction plan approval? But could that part of it be bonded until we find out if DOT wants us to change something?
No, because you wouldn't meet the, you still wouldn't meet the interconnectivity. I mean, when you do any neighborhood over here on the mainland, you're putting that in, right? When you're building the neighborhood, you're laying it in.
We put it in and then bond the last part of it because you, you generally, there's a ditch there and the grays don't work and you're going to have, somebody's going to have to put a culvert in later and put in, so, so it's not typically built all the way to the property line. In this case, it would be, you know, farther away from the property line than would be typical, but it's still not inconsistent with the way it's been done in the past.
I'm going to look to, uh, our staff to make sure they're comfortable with that, or maybe the county attorney or-
I mean, I guess what we're asking staff is how could they do that to make that interconnected build to be, you know, um, I guess, a portion or whatever to make that acceptable?
That's, I think that's what Jenny's-
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I think the, the ordinance does allow for, uh, performance guarantees for that. There's a timing issue in there too, though, like at what point? You know, there, there's a timing associated with how long you can have a bond and have to have it completed, so, so you, and you really- Okay, I thought it was two years.
It's two years, it's two years, it can be renewed after that, right?
So, then there's that issue of getting that completed at a, at a, potential issue.
That's consistent with what we did at, uh, Waterly and Wentworth, there was a section of roadway there that, um, was part of, and I can't remember which project it was, actually started out as part of it, it needed to actually be, became part of the other project and was, was bonded by the first one until it was time to, to pave it.
I, I, but I thought, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the difference here though is that didn't have a DOT stipulation like this one does for approval. This one, DOT's holding the trump card on this, whether they approve it or not. The other Waterly one didn't have a DOT factor in it, I don't believe.
Well, and that's really why I'm suggesting to bond it, because we don't want to build it in the wrong, in the wrong place and then have to tear it out.
So, uh, but the, but the, at the end of the day, there, uh, they, you can build any neighborhood and connect to a blind piece of property or any property that, and it, and it, it could be a farm field or whatever, and it, it's on a future assumption, which is essentially where we're at right now, there is a, a future assumption that this will be connected. If not, then they're going to have to come back in for an amended sketch plan, change up how that, that road comes across to Fort, Phase 4 and 5. But they would have to come back for the Board of Commissioners again to amend their sketch plan to allow for that. Sorry, we got to get it right, or we're wrong.
If you built this road to here, and this was denied, and you have to figure out how to get over here. Yeah, to see, and I was saying like come down that way. If we avoided it right away, we'd come out like that, we'd have trouble.
So, what, what level of, of approval are you proposing?
Improvements, you mean?
Of improvements would, are you suggesting we would have for what phase, for the lot?
For, for Phase 1, the lot, the subdivision, uh, it has to have that interconnectivity score, which is kind of, uh, where this, where this bridge comes in, or this, this, this buildup across the pond with culverts to get traffic across the other side.
So, we would have to have a paved road there too.
Well, then that's the question, I guess, um, because I was a little out of my depth as a non-person, building person, but, and what Ms. Turner was digging into, I guess I would look to them to advise us as to what would be acceptable from a staff level to meet the auspices of the UDO.
Can you re- repeat your question?
Okay, so, the, the, the deal is they have to have this road come across the pond to connect, for interconnectivity, right?
Right.
Mark is suggesting some portion of a bond or something like that, and I guess we need clarity on what's acceptable and what's not acceptable, it's not something we, we've dealt with, at least on my time up here, I don't remember having dealt with this before.
How about for as far as road construction?
To, no, come across, yeah, the, the, that piece that comes across the pond.
Do you mean how much of that road across the pond could be bonded?
It's, yeah, so the whole thing can be bonded and you, you would, I guess the question is what are you comfortable with?
Well, I mean, initially in the staff report, we were requesting that it be built.
Right, right.
Um, so, if, if the board wants to allow them to bond a portion of that, I think that that can be done.
Okay.
Provided, you know, access to that lot number, I believe it's Lot 6 is the commercial lot, um, is preserved, you know, actual physical access to that lot. And, you know, if the board has a timing, a timeframe in mind to put on that as to when that should be completed, the construction be completed, um, I think that could be considered as well.
That, that's part of, I mean, that was part of Phase 1, correct?
Well, initially, that, I think that what came to us last time, last two weeks ago, or when we were in here was, uh, more than that now, that the, uh, this bridge be built and the board, we had a lot of discussion about it going to nowhere, to an empty lot and golf carts and people and tourists being what they are, uh, that there was a safety factor associated with that, right? And, um, so my thought was, we don't, we shouldn't build it necessarily now, but when we're ready to, when they're ready to build it to come across to access that final phase of construction. And, uh, but, they need it now for interconnectivity. Forgot all that right?
They do need it for interconnectivity, for this as well as the, the townhomes.
So, they need it now for interconnectivity, or at least having a performance bond that they will build it, uh, at some future date. Now, the performance bond, Ms. Turner said, it is acceptable, right, for them to have that. She, a date makes sense for them to, you know, they have three years, for instance, to come in and build that. Or have, you know, or at that point, you would have to have an amended sketch plan for Phases 4 and 5, right?
Right, which I, I'm sitting here thinking that, yeah, that's probably what we do is bond it and then if there are any changes to be made before the bond expires, come in and submit what we're, what we've worked out at that point. Be it access through the NC DOT or bypass in that area.
Okay, so, does that make sense to you, Mike?
I mean, it does, but is that acceptable with staff then with the bond on that?
I believe the board can place that condition on the special use permit.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, alright, so, yeah, we're looking at basically a timeframe now for, for that bond, so, so that to occur.
According to the UDO, it can be up to two years and can be renewed, but not exceeding an additional year.
Okay.
So up to three years technically.
Okay, two years. With a one-year extension possible.
For good cause shown, it can be extended for one year.
Okay. Glad I got up early this morning, got lots of sleep last night, alright. Okay, so. Have we covered all the bases?
I believe so.
You think so, okay. Alright. Anything further? Ms. Turner, do you have any, any further comments, questions, concerns at this point, are you good?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, with that being said, I will open the public comment portion of this hearing. And the first person up is Anthony Siri. And, uh, actually, I need anyone that's gonna come up, uh, why don't you all come up and we have to swear you guys in. And, um, then you can. Should be some babbles under there. Close enough. Alright, left hand on the bible, right hand in the air, alright, y'all solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Alright, and when you come up, please give us your name and address for the record.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
Tony Cherry, 1111 Pussiman Street, Corolla. Uh, and I, this wasn't part of what I wrote down, but I certainly don't envy y'all, y'all been in the weeds tonight. But it does have something to do with what I'd like to ask you to do, and that is to come up a couple levels. Come back a little bit. And remember that Corolla, like any resort town or any beach town, is a system of systems. If one system goes out of whack, it doesn't matter what you build or what you tell people, the system won't work, people will stop coming. Let me give you some examples of what I'm talking about. Great project, but where do they go to the beach? Okay, they go to north or south public beach access. Yeah, but where do they park? Okay, you're working on that on the north beach, you have a piece there that you're gonna put in some parking, so you gotta plan for that. I'm talking about where they put their beach chair. Our public beaches are, they're as bad as Jersey these days. And that's not why people come to the Outer Banks, there's no more room on our public beaches. So where are they gonna go? And I'm not talking about beach erosion, I'm just talking about people carrying their beach chair and putting it down. So what, how does that fit in to that system? Right, then, where are the people gonna live that work in the restaurant? Clean the houses, do the lawns, manage the properties, et cetera, et cetera? It's common knowledge, we don't have any place for people to work and live. So the Civic Association has forwarded to y'all an idea to convert short-term rentals into long-term rentals. Mr. Twitty has got an idea about regional. I, I don't know what the answer is, I just know that before we start approving more and more things and properties, we have to have an answer for where is the workforce gonna live? What is the tipping point for the police? What is the tipping point for EMS? How many houses, how many projects should be approved before we need more police, more fire, more EMS? I don't know the answer to that, but it just sounds like a system that needs to be addressed. What's the capacity of the food line? I don't know, but there is one. Are we there, are we past it, will this be the, the thin mint that breaks it? Just another system that we need to kinda look at every once in a while. That drainage pond, okay, in this discussion so far, that has been a drainage pond. If you live over there, or if you visit, that's the last vestige of freshwater fishing we have. We talked about the Whalehead and the aquatic vegetation, the silting up. It really isn't a good fishing spot anymore, but that lake is. Bass, carp, catfish, bluegill, and little boy and little girl's eyes that go wide when they catch their first fish. So I realize that it's something to be filled in, something for drainage and manipulation, but it's got an impact. It's a system out there that we're gonna affect with this particular build project. And then, what day are they all gonna arrive? Are we gonna say you arrive at this project on Sundays or on Saturdays? And that sounds trivial, unless you're over there on Saturday or Sunday, and people are trying to get into their houses. And they're waiting in the Food Lion parking lot or Timbuktu, which is exactly what these folks are gonna do, is they try to get into their, their, uh, houses. How much is that system gonna be able to absorb anymore? And then, what's our water capacity? I, I suspect that's known someplace, that's, but I don't know what it is, does this particular project break it? Are we gonna start running out of fresh water? And then, when you get into, um, things like rainy day traffic, that's a system in Corolla, I'm telling you. You don't go certain places on rainy days. The places you don't go is right where this project is gonna be. What's the impact on that? Is it gonna cause it to completely fail on rainy days, or is there gonna be a workaround, whatever? So you guys have a real bunch of stuff on your plate, I, I stipulate that. But I'd ask you please, as you consider to approval, back out a couple layers and ask those other questions you may not know the answers to. And it's probably not the, their problem to provide it, I don't know whose it is, I just know it's important. So the clock didn't go on, but that's about three minutes. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. This is public comment, it's.
But just so they understand.
It's not, they can't, they can't testify, but they can talk about. Alright, they're, they're offering personal opinions, but.
But we can't use that as.
Right, can't use that as evidentiary. Alright, Wayne Evans?
My name's Wayne Evans, I live at 1279 San Castle Drive. And for a mile, for brevity, I probably was gonna say much of the same thing Tony's gonna say. We've been here since six o'clock, so I think I'll just say ditto to what Tony said. But one thing, one thing that, I'm a full-time resident here, and one thing you have to look at, the residents have to live too. When we come down that road to Timbuktu on a Saturday, what do we do? When the bridge comes in, what do we do? We stay home, that's it for us. So we, we definitely have to think about the residents too, not just the tours. So I, I wish you guys would think of that, and I'm not against business, believe me. I'd like to see all the business we could have up here, but to put a business at that intersection with that bridge coming over is just not a good thing. So that's all I get to say, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Alright, Ms. Barbara Marzetti.
Barbara Marzetti, 609 CO, it's Court Corolla. I sent you my comments before on the traffic issues, and I still stand by those. The fact that the traffic report did not mention the condos at the end of Malia Drive, I mean, I just find that mind-boggling. The traffic counts were taken on a Wednesday before Labor Day, after the high season. And they talked, they, they put the counts on a cute little table and it said, morning rush hour, evening rush hour. Seven to nine AM and four to six PM, hello, Monday to Friday, like, that's not Corolla, that's urban, suburban kinds of traffic counts. As, as Tony and, and mentioned about the stormwater issue, it's a big concern. We've talked about that before. Not only for that area, because it takes all the water from Monterey shores, I mean, from Monterey Plaza and the southern end of Whalehead. But we have a flooding problem in Timbuktu. And as they said, on a rainy day, forget it, I mean, you can't, you can't move in that area. Worker housing. You know Bob, it's, it's terrible.
All too well.
It's terrible, I mean, the businesses we have there don't have room for their employees, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna support this new development? I'm not against the business, more the merrier, we need more restaurants, we need more entertainment, but we need the infrastructure to support it. There were some, Rick had shared on, I think on Facebook, so it's not official, but some sounding maps on, of the water. And this is way out of my scope, but one of our board members who couldn't attend asked me to speak to it. And he found some stuff on, online about same area USA Fisher map, showing that the depths are not what is shown on the map that Rick posted. And then he also found a study from Virginia Beach showing what happens to the water level in the, in Back Bay at North River Landing during storms. I mean, it, it's an incredible graph, I mean, I can send you the link, but it shows.
How it invites the board not to, not to consider that.
No, I understand, but this is my personal opinion and it's a concern. I mean, I live there, I have businesses there, and I would ask you to consider, think about some of these things, as Tony said, back up, look down. The other thing that I noticed in the, one of the documents for tonight, was it talked about the land use plan 2.1, coordinate with adjacent businesses for shared parking and access. There's been no discussion with adjacent businesses to my knowledge. And I hope that will happen, because as you know, I'm in Timbuktu, I'm on the board there. Nobody's come to us. So that conversation needs to happen, because we're all, you know, we're all in the same boat here. So thank you for your time, you got a, a big decision here to make, thank you.
Thank you for coming over. Alright, well, uh, I have no one else sign up this evening, is there anyone else that would like to speak to this? If you would, please come forward, and I have to swear you in and get your namenaders. If you would, just grab a bible under there and, uh, left hand on the bible and right hand in the air. You solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Alright, if you'd just give us your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Tom Wright, I live in Joggersburg, and, um, on this corner, I've stood up before in one of these hearings. And, um, my concern is not to be any kind of instruction to Rick or any of them working on this, but the fact that they hired someone about the traffic and said there was not an issue there, it's horrendous issue there. Between where I am right up on this corner and the Grandies trying to operate. I haven't had any interaction, I'd like to find out if, if we're coming over here to this phase, what could be done to help the situation? I think Mike's talking about connectivity, but you can be on our porch there at the Cotton Gin and they're just flowing across from the food line. Across the road, there's not, I don't think across, it needs to be a more official cross area there. But it's just a real lot of obstruction here, and I guess I'm here again tonight, I don't wanna be causing any harm to them, but there's some real issues up here on this corner that need to be addressed, and I'm not, I haven't heard anything other than is, is DOT gonna give them some access through to this corner property? If that's the case, fine, but what can be done to help both them and the Grandies and all of us to make the corner function better? In this process, I realize maybe the phase y'all are getting ready to vote on has nothing to do with that, but it'd be nice if the county would have some interaction with the people that have been there for 20 years to.
I kinda fall in that category.
Just tell us how this final phase, what's gonna happen, 'cause it, it seems to all be moving, but what is gonna happen over on this side, where there's, at this point, limited access? There's limited parking back over here, they're talking about some pretty big buildings going out in the water. How's all that gonna happen with the traffic like it is now, even though I realize that they've hired someone, they said there's really not a traffic problem? As I said, the last time I came here. Is Cotton Gin at the same address? I don't know what to say, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public comment. And I'll just make a couple comments. Several things that were brought up tonight were, were addressed in our first go-around of this. And public health and safety, um, when it relates to fire and EMS, we look to them to make comments during TRC review. Is there, you know, there, there's a metrics for how many deputies you need for X amount of people and whatever those things are, so they're, they're chimed in upon if they have a problem with those, that's, that's one of the checklist for the review process. And one of the things that has to be brought up, um, for an agenda item to pass like this. And the others, of course, uh, you know, will it injure value of adjoining or abutting lands or be in harmony with those? And that's testified to by an expert. I too share the same, uh, traffic concerns, I live in Whalehead right behind Food Lion, and, uh, I'm very familiar with that intersection, obviously, and, uh, so. I asked the traffic engineer pointedly about this several times, and brought up my concerns over the traffic study times. He asserted that it, it, he was still comfortable with, um, Malia Drive, being able to handle the traffic in and out. Now, you guys can shake your head, but a whole lot of traffic comes out of three driveways in Whalehead. That is three miles, nine miles total of road in Whalehead, that has three driveways to service all of those homes. Or four, I guess, excuse me, I forgot about, uh, one of them, but anyway, so that, that traffic's coming in out of there and it's handling it. And one of them happens to be the, this intersection, which exacerbates the problem. So part of what we, uh, what I mentioned and Mark, uh, made note of this evening is that, um, I wanted it one-way in. So if you come in into Timbuktu and you take a right into the vegetable stand area, or go, uh, hopefully in the future, back into the Corolla Boat Club, you have to leave out through Malia Drive, you can't come back out through Timbuktu, because the traffic is a problem there. There is no way you could make a right and try and get into that intersection and back out onto 12 at Timbuktu, so. All of the traffic generated internally in this neighborhood, or even externally coming into this neighborhood, is required to go out at Malia Drive and/or through BDA, OBX Gas, or even Ace Hardware, there's four different areas where they can leave this area and get out. So to thin traffic out, um, whatever that traffic is. So there's, there's not that many units in total compared to some other areas and some other densities we have in Corolla. I share the same concerns about, uh, workforce housing. I mean, I have the same exact problems, I cannot hire enough people, never can. I've never been able to, uh, staff up fully in my 26 years in Corolla. So it's been an ongoing problem forever, the problem is, it was never, Corolla was never designed to have multifamily housing or any density that allowed for that. And it, it was a shortsightedness, uh, I think, many years ago when the PUDs were created, so. We are stuck with that for now, unfortunately, the solution is the bridge, and it's also a part of the problem, because it's gonna create more traffic. We could have more year-round residents, um, you know, the, the faces of Corolla will definitely change with the advent of the bridge. There are different plans for 12 through this intersection in the future. That is probably one of the hang-ups that they're dealing with, is what does this intersection look like? They're talking about expanding it through there, uh, traffic roundabouts instead of stoplights, there's some things that they're looking at. So there's, there's other plans for 12 in the future, and maybe they need to happen now versus when the bridge gets there, but that's a discussion for an ARPO meeting, which I have tomorrow at 10 o'clock. So, um, anyway, I just wanted to address some of your concerns, I too share them, I did ask questions about them. For better or worse, whether I like the answer or not, uh, I can't consider that, I do have to consider the testimony of an expert. Much to my chagrin, so.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
I just want to reiterate that the last time we discussed this, part of the concern was, and it was brought up about the, there was a farm market there in the corner, how it would impact the business there with the traffic and some of the other businesses, and the concern was, we didn't wanna create something that was gonna, uh, harm their current businesses or getting traffic around there. And the thought process was, if DOT did eventually approve that, it would make flow better through there and allow probably better traffic for the businesses in there, that was a concern. That we didn't, um, have, pose any harm to those existing businesses. 'Cause we wanna make sure that they, you know, they've been there a long time and that they're, uh, the traffic, and they still get the flow. And then if, if that bridge over, that walkway went through, there's a potential, then they could even get some more business, foot traffic or something through there, across that bridge or the connectivity, but the big concern was to make sure that we did not harm, um, existing businesses that were there and help with the traffic flow to probably get more.
Right.
Better, positive, more customer experience with the traffic in there, so that, that was addressed and that was a concern with this.
And the parking, uh, they brought up that the parking right now is kind of haphazard, as everyone knows in there, that when they, when they go in to do this and connect, um, they clean up the parking, delineate it much better in the drive. delineate it much better in the drive aisles to actually make that area look better and flow better all the way around. Anything else?
Yeah, the other comment was made about everybody hanging out in Food Lion. They're also hanging out at the Harris Teeters and swimming in the drainage pond, but not until they put a lifeguard in. So, I'm here every Saturday and Sunday all summer long, and, you know, I see the worst of the traffic. I have the innate ability to go grocery shopping at 4:00 on a Saturday. One of these days I'll learn. Part of what the county is also trying to do is to, is to, and I'm hoping to be successful, is to start, to stop Food Lion's parking lot being the focal point of hanging out awaiting for check-in. We have the Heritage Park, we have wonderful facilities there, you know, golly, let's get kids in fields where they can run around and actually use a restroom instead of the crepe myrtle trees that are along 12. So, you know, we're, we're working that too. From a beach perspective, you know, I use Coral, occasionally Benito. We're not chock-a-block with, and I don't care what, what weekend.
Public beach.
I'm sorry?
Public beach access.
It absolutely is. Benito is a public parking.
Yeah, there's public parking lots all through Whalehead.
We're calling Whalehead, isn't it?
Throughout? Absolutely. Whalehead. Yes, sir. Whalehead, all of Whalehead's park, public parking is public beach. You can't park on the street and walk to the beach, ideally, but, but all of those parking lots are available. So, there's, now, they get full, especially waiting check-in, but, but the county's aware of the challenges, you know, fire EMS, I'm plugged into them all the time. And, you know, it's probably one of the safest areas out there because of the staffing that we have and all that. So, we're, we're not jumping in completely blind, but you raised some very good points.
Yes, and, yeah, there are public parking lots, there's, that's also where our lifeguards are, are at those ramps where the lifeguard, you know, so we, we also list those publicly or on the internet, on the county website, you can find all the public parking lots so that people know where they're at. So, yeah, we've-
I just want to say one thing.
You can't, you cannot, you cannot, sorry.
But we're already at pass-
Ma'am, we're done with public comment, I'm sorry, you should have spoke up at that time. So, okay, I apologize. Part of this process is, this is a semi-legal proceeding, it's quasi-judicial. We sit as a judge board and we hear evidence. It cannot be hearsay. The questions that were brought up or comments that were made are just those. Those are personal comments. They do raise some, some concerns, some thoughts in us that we can, we can further expound on if we need to, or ask experts if we need to. But everything else that's brought before us is, is expert testimony, and without someone to refute that, we have to basically accept that as the God's gospel truth, even though our eyes tell us differently when we're in Corolla and see Route 12 during the summer. So, unfortunately, that's just the way it is and how we were set up to work out. Is there any further comments, questions, concerns from the board?
I just, I have some, just some issues with the traffic, the traffic study that was done, the times, like I believe Ms. Marzetti brought up, and I mean, I, I've worked that area, I don't work Corolla a lot, I do supervise over there, and I'm over there probably 20, 20 days in the summer and just the, the traffic thing, this traffic study and the times are just-
It's a bit disingenuous to be, to be sure.
That's my, my major hang-up.
But fortunately, we're stuck with that. Yes, sir.
I just wanted one final clarification of, maybe staff, I guess, could, I just want some clarity again. If this, if DOT does not approve that interconnectivity, whatever, then Phase Four, the final phases, those houses, am I correct, or is that Phase Three?
Phase Four and Five would be the-
With those houses or those deck things out there.
Commercial component on, on the bottom of the map.
Yeah, bottom of the map.
Yeah.
Would that have to be, would that be coming back for redesign at that point? Or, or is that, would that still stay intact?
If the, if the applicant wanted to develop those phases, then they would need that approval for access.
Okay, so if, if DOT, hypothetically, if DOT then does not approve that piece for interconnectibility, then that bottom section would have to be redone, is that what I'm hearing?
They'd have to amend their sketch plan, right? If they wanted to do something different? Is that correct?
So this, like I said, there's, there's a, there's a potential that this would change then based on that decision. Is that, is that correct?
Correct, yes. I, I'd like to just put up the, because, so this was used to show you about the phasing, or, or I think, yeah, this is the phasing that, that Mr. Bissell had prepared for tonight. And that shows you the overall project, but, you know, what you're hearing tonight is the preliminary plat for the lots, and this drawing gives you-
Right.
The, more detail about the subdivision itself and what's being heard.
So the portion in cream or yellow is what we're really talking about?
We're discussing about tonight, so the other phases are later on.
Right.
So they would, okay, that would come before us at a later time.
Well, you've already seen that, that sketch plan.
But if they had to redo it, that would come before us again?
Correct, yes.
Everybody clear on that? All right, well, moving forward to motions. Commissioner Beaumont will not be voting this evening, as he was not here for the first meeting and did not have a chance to watch it, so he cannot vote on it because he did not receive the testimony of the first meeting, but was able to participate and ask questions tonight in general as a board member. So, with that being said, as it's my district, I guess it's up to me to make a motion and figure all this out. And with that, I move to approve PB 87-56 Monterey Shores Phase 10, Part A Preliminary Plat Special Use Permit, because the applicant has demonstrated their proposed use meets the review standards of the UDO. Item one, the use will not endanger the public health or safety. Item two, the use will not, will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. Number three, the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans, specifically Policy, Policies 1.3, Community Character, Policy 2.1, Business Site and Design, EP 1.1 for Wetland Preservation, PR 2.1 for the greenways and walkways, and Corolla Policy G2 and 2.1. The use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. There are multiple conditions, which I'm going to try and get through here and make sure we have them right. Let's see here. One of the conditions is that the roadways be amended to show the changes for the one-way in and everyone exiting out through Malia Drive. Should that attention, or should that permission ever be granted by the NC DOT to, to connect for interconnectivity? What's that?
Do you need these?
Well, I wrote most of them down because there were other stuff in there, but what page are we on?
Page five.
Thank you. Most of it chopped down. All right. The TRC comments encompass a lot of things. Let's see here. Item one, we, we have amended to allow for the connecting roadway to be, where was it? The interconnectivity to be bonded with up to two years to complete that with a one-year possible extension for good cause. Or they must come before the Board of Commissioners to amend the sketch plan to reflect the new design. Number two, prior to recording the final plat, now that's the road construction, excuse me. Yes, prior to recording the final plat, construction, the road construction across the pond to NC DOT property must be completed and/or, as I said, amended through a new sketch plan to reflect future phases. Construction of the boardwalk, they must obtain camera permits prior to recording the final plat and per, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I've got too many notes on here. They must obtain, obtain the camera permits of all the docks to multifamily, of the docks before, for the, before multifamily, before they go into Phase Two for multifamily. And, and construction must be concurrent during Phase Two with the multifamily. Proposed changes to the pond configuration shall not negatively impact the county's easement or purpose for the easement recorded in the Currituck County Register of Deeds Office on deed book page 1135, page 302. Walkways and piers for private property owner use may not be construction in open space Let's see here, and then the paving. Can be multistaged and must be completed prior to final plat approval, and Malia Drive must be brought up to NC DOT construction standards prior to final plat approval, or final construction. Which would be the correct way to say that, Jenny?
I think I would, condition six, I would say, prior to approval of final plat, provide certification that Malia Drive meets NC DOT construction standards.
Thank you, as you said. All right, now, did I miss anything? I think I've got everything in there that the county staff would have liked to have Mark, are you good with all that? Did it make sense to you?
Perfect.
Okay.
Talking to the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, carries. All right, we'll take a brief five-minute recess before we jump into our next agenda item. All right, thank you, everyone. We'll get to get back at it. Public hearings, number two, PB 22-13 Ashbrook Estates LLC rezoning. Ashbrook Estates LLC is requesting to rezone 130.73 acres from Ag to MXR for property located on Maple Road, Tax MAC 52, parcel 12 Crawford Township. Good evening, Ms. Kemp.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the commission. As you mentioned, this request is to rezone approximately 131 acres located on Maple Road. Most of you are probably familiar with the site. It is the vacant field that is just north of our water department and across Maple Road from the detention center. The site is currently being farmed, and I will mention that there are some wetlands on the site, it is the wooded area you see at the rear of the site. The site is zoned AG Agricultural, as is all the sites around it. Shown here is the applicant's exhibit. The request is specifically to zone 130.73 acres from agriculture to MXR mixed residential. Just to give you some background, the purpose of the MXR district is for a variety of residential types at a moderate density. It has low-intensity neighborhood-serving commercial, personal services, and light industrial use, and encourages moderate-cost housing in well-designed neighborhoods with commercial in close proximity. This slide right here shows you all the uses in both the agriculture and the MXR district. The uses circled in red are the uses that are permitted in the MXR but not the AG. I won't go through all of them, but I just wanted to list some common uses that could possibly increase the intensity on the lot. Those uses are duplex, multifamily and townhomes, restaurants, grocery and convenience stores, retail establishments, shopping centers, personal service establishments, and indoor and outdoor recreation. This request is a conventional zoning, which means the applicant just needs to meet the minimum standards of the UDO. Since 2013, this board has considered conventional zonings. However, they have been in instances usually where it's a down zoning to a less intense zoning, where there is bifurcated zoning on a property, or where the adjoining parcels are all the same zoning district. In contrast, a conditional rezoning since 2007 has been a tool that has helped you align development with the character and values of the county adopted plans. Just to refresh your memory, a conditional zoning allows the applicant to impose conditions, provides predictability to conform to the adopted plans, tailor's uses to accommodate property owners' interests with community values and character, and addresses expected impacts of the development. The Imagine Currituck Plan classifies this property as O2 reserved lands. O2 reserved lands are typically wetlands or environmentally sensitive areas. It does allow for low-density, single-family residence, but should not be targeted for public or private water or wastewater. Appropriate uses include county parks, greenways, cultivated land, and as I mentioned, low-density single-family rural development. There are six goals and policies in Imagine Currituck that are relevant to this request. The first two are infrastructure and county services, and they are goal one, sufficient services to support growth and development and continue enforcement of the adequate public facilities ordinance. Goal eight, to ensure public services stay at a level to provide superior service to the growing population. Also relevant is transportation goal one, to improve safety, traffic flow, access, and appearance of major roads. And lastly, three environmental goals and policies, those are, one, protect environmentally sensitive areas, two, preserve prime agricultural land, and three point one, preserve the riparian buffer along wetlands. This site is also included in the Maple Barco Small Area Plan. As you can see from the image, most of the property is in the transitional or conservation land classification. The purpose of the Small Area Plan is to balance growth and economic expansion with the integrity and character of the existing community. It takes into account growth of the airport, protecting county resources, preserving agrarian heritage, and maintaining a high quality of life. Here are the applicable policies in the Maple Barco Small Area Plan. I'm not going to go and read through all these policies, but I did want to bring up four key areas that they do address. The first is density of housing, particularly close to the airport. The second is encouraging neighborhood-serving local businesses. The third is protect and preserve environmentally sensitive areas. And lastly, it talks to storm water and water quality management. The site is also in the Airport Overlay District, specifically Zone Three. Zone Three does allow for residential use, however at a density that is the base zoning district. In this case, the existing base zoning district of Ag permits for one dwelling unit every three acres. Now, staff performed an analysis of possible densities on the site. It looked at both the current zoning and the possible MXR zoning. In order to do so, staff made a few assumptions on the 130.73 acre parcel, just wanted to bring to your attention. The first is that 10% of the land would be used for infrastructure. The second is that 18 acres of the land is undevelopable wetlands. And lastly, that the soils are suitable for septic. So given those assumptions, staff ran some density calculations. In the existing AG zoning, what it is now, the property would yield 43 lots in a traditional subdivision and 52 lots in a conservation subdivision. Also, the agricultural zoning does not allow for multifamily or non-residential. In contrast, with the proposed MXR zoning, the property could yield up to 130 single-family residences, lots, 175 multifamily lots, or 229 non-residential lots. As such, it is staff's opinion that with no development plan, it is not possible to determine the consistency and reasonableness of, of the development- determine the consistency and reasonableness of, of the development with the surrounding area, with the Imagine Kirtuk Plan, with the Maple Barco Small Area Plan, or the UDO. The planning board reviewed this item and recommended denial by a four-to-one vote. They stated it's not consistent with the Imagine Kirtuk or Maple Barco Small Area Plan, and without a conceptual plan, it's not possible to provide assurance of compatibility with county plans. They also noted that the proposed change of zoning may greatly increase the density. With that, I will leave you with the eleven factors that the board may consider with a zoning map amendment and stand by for any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one. You said the Maple and Barco Small Area Plan?
Yes.
When was that done?
That was done in July of two thousand and nine.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Anything from Ms. Kemp? All right. Thank you, Kemp.
All right, thank you, Chairman.
All right, I'd like to invite the applicant up or representative. Good evening. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Jason Mazel, the Timmins Group, eighteen oh-five West City Drive in Elizabeth City. Surveyor, project manager here on behalf of the applicant, Ashbrook Estates LLC. Also with me this evening is Mr. Hood Ellis, legal representative for the applicant.
Okay.
We need to get sworn in?
No.
Okay.
Legislative, so.
Well, thank you all for the opportunity to come before the board this evening. I will try to be brief. I do have a few things to add on top of what staff's report has shown you. One of the items that I want to go back to is the previous land use plan, the two thousand and six plan that was revised a few times between then and two thousand and nine, which then begot the Small Area Plan. That land use plan had this area listed as full service. The Small Area Plan had it, the predominantly developable area on this lot shown as transitional. I'd like to read a couple, a couple of things if you don't mind. In the Small Area Plan, under the definition for transitional, the transitional designation is appropriate for areas between land use classifications that may contain non-compatible uses. Transitionally designated areas should be allowed greater flexibility in the types of services and uses. These areas provide an opportunity to ensure future land use conflicts are minimized through careful attention to the existing context of immediate surroundings and thoughtful site design. This may include incorporation of increased buffers, low-impact development techniques, architectural standards, and preservation of culturally and historically significant landmarks. The transition from you have existing local government facilities such as the treatment plant, and you have residence, single-family residential to the north of this property. So it would make sense to have this area transition from one to the other, whether that's a mix of residential, potentially some of the non-residential uses that are allowed that are under MXR. The adoption of the latest future land use plan, the Imagine Kirtuk Plan, kept the similar designation for the parcels on both the north and south sides. That's currently shown as G-two. G-two controlled growth contains medium-density residential developments and neighborhood-scale commercial nodes. The sector is characterized by interconnected local road network, available water, wastewater, walkable, walkable neighborhoods that connect to parks, open space, commercial nodes, and other neighborhoods. There's a tieback there to transitional that's mentioned in the Small Area Plan. Going back to the land use plan specifically, full-service areas talks about the base density being two units per acre. When we look under the Northern Mainland Future Land Use in the current land use, land use code, the Maple Barco area listed under G-two still says up to two units per acre. So this is consistent with the last land use plan. It just left out this parcel of land when it was adopted, strangely enough. The applicant bought this property in two thousand and twenty-one prior to that change in land use plan with the envision of utilizing the O-six to O-nine plan as a basis for what might would come on this property. So wanted to just kind of plug those things in just for some history of the property and the history of the land use plan with this property. As for the MXR zone itself, items that could potentially be higher density, I would also like to add, have to come back in front of this board. Townhomes, multifamily, they are all subject to use permits that have to come from, come in front of the staff, planning board, and board of commissioners for approval. It is not a carte blanche. You get to go do this if you get MXR zoning. Likewise, any subdivision, especially right now with, with the adequate facilities ordinance, twenty lots, twenty lots or less still have to come in front of this board for approval. The likelihood that a development on this property would be less than twenty lots is very unlikely, so it would have to come in front of this board for formal approval. Currently, this, this parcel is in the Central Elementary and Kirtuk Middle School District, which is not currently at capacity as far as I'm aware. It would still be in Kirtuk High School's district, which I know they're at, at over eighty-five percent. So again, any development plan for subdivision would have to come in front of this board because of those, those items. The developer has, the applicant has expressed some items that they intend to see here. Again, I know that based on the request, the request is for the zone, not a specific use. Items that they would really like to, to put here is affordable moderate housing. Again, we've, we've heard that in the depiction of what the Small Area Plan was looking for here, moderate housing. With the adequate facilities ordinance, this would have to come through, any development plan would have to come through as a phased development. That has been the MO for the last couple of years, knowing the conditions we have in the county with emergency services, schools, so on and so forth. So I think there's plenty of opportunity going forward for there to be controlled growth with this parcel. The UDO is very aggressive. You have one of the more restrictive stormwater ordinances in our area. I mean, trying, trying to design for a post-development condition when you're looked analyzing a pre-development, two-year wooded condition despite whatever the, the current state is. So we have to analyze this property as if it was completely wooded today on a two-year storm event. That means nothing's running off of this thing. Everything's staying. So you have mechanisms in place to protect the public, protect the residents of this development. You have teeth in your ordinance to regulate the uses that would come on this parcel. Traffic, again, any development plan would be subject to scrutiny by DOT and staff and could be requested to have a traffic impact analysis. Again, you have mechanisms to protect from this becoming a burden. The property is highly suitable for septic. The water plant thankfully is right next door, so water shouldn't be an issue. You know, community design standards in your ordinance would have to be adhered to. The developer wants to get something that's in a price point that people can afford. To do that, unfortunately, unfortunately means having to get more out of the apple. So going to two units per acre would allow to get more on the infrastructure put in, keep the prices more moderate in the two to three hundred thousand range where maybe someone can actually afford it. We just heard talking about workforce housing. If multifamily component was to come, that might be a potential for workforce housing, especially if the bridge ever comes. Again, I know these are speculative because we're talking about a straight zoning. But the applicant wanted me to relay the ideas of what they envisioned for the property. The reason we can't bring a, a formal plan in front of you is because we know it's going to be phased development and the market's going to change. And so spending tens of thousands of dollars to put together a plan that may not make sense in three or four years wasn't really a viable option for them. We've talked with staff before on several occasions about adapting the conditional zoning to be more about the uses or excluding uses. The current guidelines are we have to bring a formal plan, and it's very difficult to go back and change that plan. So that's how we got to this decision today to bring forth a straight zoning. I'm more than happy to answer any questions anyone has, as well as Mr. Ellis.
I have a couple if I can jump in. So I think you raised points that actually are, it's difficult. We want conditions because we don't want a wide open. When you go to MXR, you can say what you want, but you just said conditions change, and all of a sudden, they come up with a different project that doesn't look anything like what they wanted. And now you're into an SUP, and we have a legal obligation to accept the testimony of experts, as you just witnessed at our last agenda item. So I guess if they really knew what they were going to do with it, why not come forward with a conditional zoning?
They know that one component will be single-family. Short of that, that's about as far as it goes. There's been talk of potentially some non-residential uses, but it's hard to get people to really bite onto that without the zoning in place. Financing is another thing. A lot of people can't get financing if the zoning's not in place. So if there's a portion of this that might want to go to a non-residential use such as, you know, small retail or a restaurant or say a pharmacy, something of that nature, if the developer for that portion doesn't have the zoning in place, then they may not be able to get the financing.
Can't you do that with conventional zoning, though?
Yeah.
You have to have a plan. You have to have a formal plan.
I think that's our point is we, we, we like having a plan. We want you to come up with a plan and understand what, what it is you're presenting, what it is you're, you're going to, you're going to do there for the future. Does it, so we can understand, does it fit with the area, right? Right now, you're, you're basically wide open with a, with a fairly high-density project at MXR. I mean, people use it all the time to get density.
And as to the, the, you know, density changing from when it was originally purchased and, and the current, that's the nature of land development in, I mean, in the world or in the United States.
And we were heavy on that.
But yes, so a couple, sharing the same thoughts, we'd like to know what's going to happen with it. And in fact, it's a lot easier to hold developers accountable to the picture that they painted, right? Because at the end of the day, and there's an individual out there who will absolutely hold us accountable to what we agree to and what we see and what you say, right? And so without a plan, and I've only been a commissioner for ten years, not like Owen, but, you know, believe it or not, there are a lot of developers out there, especially back in the day, who did whatever they wanted to do once they got past this phase of the land development process. So this is our best opportunity to form, to structure, to shape a development into what we want. Now, from, and, and in all of what you said, you know, I, you know, sorry, I was a Navy pilot. I know Mike has never heard that. And so this entire subdivision is basically going to sit underneath the downwind leg of going into land at Kirtuk County Airport. And I will tell you as an aviator, the most dangerous aspects of flight, and we've had at least one crash, right? On takeoff out of, out of Kirtuk County. I don't know if there's been another one, but you're, you're in the prime, you know, the thought of higher density, townhouses, whatever, to try to get the cost down, and having an aircraft lose it and plant it in there is terrifying to me. And, and I'll also tell you that, you know, unlike Virginia Beach, right, that built Oceana, and everyone's surprised when aircraft after, actually land there, again, I'm going to point to the guy in, in there who has been known to call us when the Navy's doing as they are allowed to do. You know, you're allowed, and I'll take the Navy out, you're allowed to use an airport twenty-four-seven. Right? And a lot of residents forget that if there's an airport there, right up into the point that it wakes them up and somebody's coming in to land. And there's just all kinds of things that I, for one, don't have a warm and fuzzy about what's going to go on there. And, and like Commissioner White said, you've raised all of the questions, all of the concerns we have, you've verbalized as wanting the flexibility, and we, we have to defend the decisions we make up here in Kevin's favorite venue, Facebook, right? We have to defend the decisions we make to the public and have to have a good reason as to how we're protecting the, the county's and the residents' best interests. You've raised a bunch of questions without any warm and fuzzies that we have nothing, we have no ammo to defend ourselves with.
And I think if there were a better mechanism to bring a conditional zoning forward that didn't require a hard, fast plan, I think that's the biggest obstacle here is having stuff that isn't very flexible.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I got a question for you. Say we overcome the land use plan, we overcome the Small Area Plan, how do you overcome the Airport Overlay District that says it must remain at its base density, which is one to three?
Well, the base density would, staff can correct me if I'm wrong, wouldn't the base density change to the MXR?
Yes, that's correct.
You still would be controlled by the land use plan because with the change in zoning, it would also propagate a change of the land use plan for that parcel over to G-two, and that's going to restrict it to two units per acre.
Is it override the airport plan?
That's a question for an attorney.
I didn't even know we had a Small Area Plan still. I had to Google it and I was looking at it on my computer.
I think we had something come before us along the highway a few years ago.
It's.
It was the, you want to do MXR with that.
Correct, and it was.
I thought the airport overruled it.
That was the basis of denial was the, the airport overlay and the business.
You took that plan into consideration and wanted to make sure that you preserved the integrity of the airport in its operation.
And, and that's the other thing. That airport is probably, I'm going to go way out there, the number one commercial slash industry focus in Kirtuk County. I mean, there's some other things that are going to come, but right now, all of the growth is in that airport.
I was writing, Commissioner Payman, what, what were you referring to when he said before that? I was trying to remember what we were talking about.
Oh, there was a piece of land at, by the Ponderosa.
Right, across the street, it was going to be a gas station and high-density housing.
Yes.
But that was in the approach zone, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was, I guess.
That's part of the airport overlay.
Yes, it was. And what, I guess I'm trying to understand, I mean.
Well, keep in mind, the, the multifamily and townhome stuff doesn't, doesn't carte blanche come with MXR. That still requires having to come back and get a USP conditional.
And I understand, so if that's, if, if, if that's, you stipulated a few commercial prospects and, and with, and then some more density, well, that would fit into a conditional MXR then if you have those thoughts already, so.
Other than you have to have a hard, fast plan, and I think that's been the obstacle since we looked at that back in the fall.
I just remember the board's always had some concerns when you do unconventional zoning because the list on there, and like Commissioner White says.
Sam Miller.
Because, yes, you can say something, but if you sold it and re-zoned, then the next person can come in, could build a crematory, anything they wanted to on there.
What is the potential?
That's the concern, I think.
Well, and what is the potential to change the process for conditional zoning? Again, looking at what uses can be specified as opposed to the, a.
I think we can, we can stipulate for as much as we want to as far as types of stuff on there.
And I agree with what's being said here. I really, I think the way it was phrased to me a couple of years ago, that the best tool in the toolbox to regulate an area is this, this process, the rezoning. And without conditions, you know, I, I can't imagine what this area, that, that road itself is certainly not a high-capacity road. The airport, there's so many factors on this piece of property especially that concern me with the conventional rezoning. I just, I think that it's not wise for us to just assume that the best is going to happen. that the best is going to happen on this piece of property because it very well may not.
I got a question for staff then, real quick then. If, again, hypothetical here, if this was approved for conventional zoning and the maximum amount of houses or whatever was put on, density was put on there, when you calculate the student body, would that exceed, I think you said it's going to be Central Elementary School and Kirtuk Middle School?
Yes.
Would that exceed that?
Again, it's really impossible to tell unless we know how many units are coming in. Central is not at capacity right now.
What is their, do you know what their current capacity is? Just hypothetically, I'm just curious, close?
I don't know off the top of my head. They're close to capacity, but they are not at capacity.
They're close to it?
Relatively.
What's that?
I want to say like the Central and the Kirtuk, I know Kirtuk Middle School, their capacity is not probably anywhere near it, but I know Central was 90-some percent, maybe 88?
Yeah, they're up there.
They're up there.
Central is?
I think it's 93, am I right?
Yeah.
That sounds right.
All right.
But I know Kirtuk Middle has room, I believe.
I do think the other thing to note with staff's scenarios, 10% infrastructure probably didn't include stormwater, correct?
Yeah, 10% was just a figure we took, you know, an approximation. But it might not have included all the stormwater.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to get just 10% infrastructure with stormwater, based on the ordinance. I mean, I don't think you can physically fit the density they showed. I think the two units per acre inside of the developable area probably works. You can pretty much figure the portion of the property that's in the flood zone will probably wind up being stormwater retention.
What's your, I mean, I did some basic math while we sat here. I know they were saying 13 acres and then the 18%, it's like about 25 acres roughly of wetlands. What's the, in the total number you're seeing or your, for the density, or not the density, but your total number of acreages to be used?
I think you're probably looking at, you know, 65 to 70% of the site once you take the stormwater into account. We looked at a, early on when they purchased the property, we looked at doing a standard conservation subdivision in Ag, which is what everybody has been doing the last several years. You know, 60% open space, 52 units. Your standard fare. And I mean, the good bulk of that flood zone area was going to wind up being stormwater retention. Of course, that's looking at larger lots, looking at most likely higher-dollar homes if you were to go that route. You're going to get the same thing you've seen in Moayak the last several years.
Exceptional of the soils, that dirt's pretty good over there.
The soils are much better than, say, our partners to the north. It is a much sandier situation on this property versus some of the land in the Moayak area.
Okay. Any more questions or comments from the board?
So what, I mean, he's, the 65%, so what would that be? 130 half would be about 70 acres, low 70s?
Yeah.
And just for my clarity again, the applicant is stuck on conventional?
Unless there's a mechanism to look at conditional zoning where it relates to uses and density. I think that's something that the applicant could get behind. Having to be locked in to a particular set of lot lines, street right-of-ways, I mean, staff can correct me if I'm wrong, any minor change to or deviation from a parcel line would have to come all the way back through this process.
Yep. Yes, the ordinance allows for minor modifications and it spells those out as driveway locations, structural floor plan revisions, minor shifts in building size or location, and facility design modifications for amenities and the like. Those are the minor modifications that can be approved administratively.
So if we did a phased development and we got through Phase 2 and the market drastically changed and they needed to relook at doing something different, everything's coming back in front of this board again. And potentially being told no at that point and being stuck with what they presented, and it may not really function or it may not really be marketable.
Pretty much like everybody else has come before you that's had an MXR and had a conditional zoning, like almost every neighborhood in the county.
Yeah, I'd really like to see the uses be the focus of the conditional zoning and the density, but I understand the process.
We did that with the Ponderosa land. They had come in and said, "We have this loose," or it was another, they had come in and part of their conditions was they could only use it for these things that were in there. But it was a little bit more wide-ranging things and allowed more flexibility.
Well, it was on shortcut, which, I mean, you had, and that's a far leap, of 158 and Maple Road, right?
Other than that, I remember that site specifically. It was more in line with the approach zone than...
Yeah, you were dropping a plane on it if they were coming in for a landing.
At least this is over on the side in District 3.
All right. Anything further from the board? Okay.
Thank you.
So you got, Mr. Ellis, did you have anything this evening? Okay. All right, thanks, sir. All right, with that, then I will move on to public comment. Do we have people back there still? David Kahn? If you would please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's David Kahn, I'm at 369 Maple Road.
Thank you.
All right, so I've lived here for a few years now and thoroughly enjoyed it. I moved down here from an area where there was a lot of houses and neighborhoods that were popping up like this, and that's why I chose to move down to an area like this. Just seeing the changes that happened where I came from and what impacted everybody around, you know, made me move. Coming down here on this road here, I just don't see how there could possibly be a way that you can stick 100, 150 houses on that road and have that amount of traffic and people in and out. I drive down that road every morning to go to work. The cars that are already starting to come through there, cutting, you know, from Elizabeth City to come through, it jams it up, it clogs it up. The weekends are just absolutely horrible. You sit both ends of that road sometimes for 10, 12 minutes before you can get out. You know, just it's not the kind of life that I think, you know, some of the residents down there really want right now. There's plenty of other neighborhoods around here that are popping up that I think are affordable for folks that need to move around. And I think this would just be one of the last places we need to think about, you know, just jamming in a bunch of condos or houses and, you know, just sticking people. So I hope, I hope it stays the way it is.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
All right, Jason, I had you sign up on here. I'm assuming you said your piece. Is John Snowden still back there? There he is. All right, it's close.
Maruster will be asleep when I go home. All right. Yeah, well, he'll wake me up at 5:00 in the morning. And I didn't bring him tonight. I'm sure he has something to say about it. My name is John Snowden. I live at 112 Maple Road and I have other properties on Maple Road. And I farm 32 acres of land on Maple Road. My name is Farmer John and I do not grow houses, I grow food. Agricultural resources in our county are our best resources. They keep open space, they keep our taxes down because they're not houses that cost $3,000 each in what we give them back as a government. I'm going to stick to my cards, I'm not going to go off script here. Rezoning is a political and legislative decision. It is not like the quasi-judicial decision where you have sworn testimony. You can have people who get emotional about it, like my neighbor back here, you can have me. You have no obligation to rezone this property. The applicant bought this property, he knew he had Ag property. Whether he wants to say it was under a former land use plan, it's under the current land use plan, which allows about 45 to 50 lots. He gets use of his property. You are not denying a property owner use if it stays the same zoning. Poor planning on his part does not constitute an emergency on your part. I've told that tons of times at work. I worked at a medical school as a software engineer. The only time an applicant has legal recourse against this board is if it's spot zoning. Spot zoning means you've made a little teeny zone that doesn't go with everything around it, and I believe this board has been sued before for that. You will not be sued for denying him a rezoning. You have complete legal protection. I defer to the attorney and the former attorney on that. Okay, so July, he bought it, $830,000. I watched it. If I won the lottery, I would have bought it. It would have had greenhouses on it. I would have grown food for people and I would have made a considerable amount more than he will make on houses. That's the value of Ag land. We live just south of Hampton Roads, the largest metropolitan area between, what, Miami and New York, DC? We need to feed people, that keeps our space open. Now, I'm not going to tell him what to do with his property. He's more than welcome to put 50 houses up there. But you do not give him rezoning because Ag land costs nothing. There's no impact to the taxpayer for growing food on that property and have it farmed, no matter where they come from. But when he puts houses in there, one student on a unit is $2,800 per the superintendent's office today in a phone call, $2,800. And he wants to put $300,000 houses in there? $300,000 houses only pay $1,500. So he's piggybacking his profit and his development on the backs of all of the taxpayers. So you owe it to all of the taxpayers to deny this rezoning. Under Ag zoning, he's got 130 acres, he can get 43 to 52 houses per Mr. Kemp in the documents. 56% open space, so he's going to get .33, one-third unit to four-tenths of a unit per acre. Nice, low density, which the area plans say we should keep that low density because it's near the airport. He says it's not in the approach zone. Guess what? I live there. I see the planes go right over that field. All it takes is one to leave a smoking hole. Conventional rezoning, he has no plan. They didn't want to spend the money on a plan. That's what you saw. They don't want to get themselves locked in with a plan. So rezoning is a tool, as Ms. Salina said. And if it's used correctly, it can reduce density or, but keep the density where it's manageable. If it's used incorrectly, you cause problem. 2006, 2007, I can affirm this, and Mr. McCord and I talked about it, there was 2,700 to 3,500 acres rezoned in Moayak where Waterly and those other subdivisions are, rezoned as political favors, and I'll say it right here to their campaign donors because the names match the names. And I was a newspaper publisher, I know how to put one and one together. So now we have huge densities on Tulsa Street Road because those commissioners literally poured gas on the floor and waited for somebody to strike a match. That's why you've got the density in Moayak. I'm not going to mention Fost. MXR, you've been told, he can get up to 150 lots. 150 lots, 150 units will cost us $2,800 a unit and bring in nothing, nearly nothing to cover infrastructure. He doesn't cover the schools, let alone fire EMS, police protection, social services, senior center, parks and rec. None of that's covered by this development. And they've already said they don't want to build on larger lots. Three-acre lots are beautiful. They're high-dollar lots. High-dollar lots means those people who buy them pay taxes that match the services that they receive. My house, I bought out of foreclosure, 2015, 2016. It was worth $112,000. I've renovated it and now I pay taxes on a $500,000 house on the corner of Maple Road. My mom's house that I'm getting ready to sell, it doesn't pay enough taxes to cover putting a family of three in there, you know? I'm just going to get to the end of it. You guys have heard what the densities can be through the roof, basically. Instead of 42 to 50 houses, we want up to 150 or 200 units if it's a mixed residential business thing. This thing conflicts with every single plan we put in place in 10 years. It's not transitional. Transitional, you're going from rural to swamp, literally, all around it. And here we are, going to drop 150-unit subdivision in that? That's not transitional. That's going up and then going down. You've heard it, the airport overlay, I lived there, I served on the airport board. We do not promote residences around the airport. People sleeping at night do not go good with Navy helicopters flying around at night. And I'm the first one that's got you all on speed dial. When they come over, I'm going, "Listen to that."
That's why my phone's on silent at night, John, just because of you.
It's 10 o'clock at night and I got to go to work at 5:00 in the morning. Some people over there don't complain, but... So who pays for those expenses on those taxes? I'm going, traffic on Maple Road, 150 houses, 300 cars, everybody's got two cars in their yard. 2:00 in the afternoon last week, I was home on vacation and there was a 10-car backup to get out of Maple Road onto 168 going north. What's it going to be like when people are pouring out of their houses going to work in the morning? Either way, okay? I own a farm business there. I sell vegetables, I sell ice, we do box deliveries. My business would benefit from 150 houses there. I love density when it comes to houses. I go through Eagle Creek and all and throw stuff out. But should I benefit on the backs of the taxpayers? That's what we're doing here. They're making profit on the backs of the taxpayers. And if I just went along to get along, I'd take the extra business and keep my mouth shut, but I don't want to do that, it's not right. Anyhow, I think you guys know I'm opposed to this. You don't have to approve this, it's nothing personal. We don't know who the developer is, it's Ashbrook Estates. I saw it when it sold, and I couldn't afford it. He's allowed to put his 50 houses on there, that's what you need to hold him to. They don't want to spend money on a plan, they want to get triple density. And so instead of about 2.2 million to 3 million, they want to get 6 to 9 million dollars. It all comes down to the dollar. That's it.
All right. There's no one else signed up? Is there anyone out there that would like to speak to this agenda item seating? All right. Seeing none, then I will close the public comment and look to the board for action on this item.
I do got another question.
Yes, sir.
Regarding the school capacity with staff again, even if this got denied tonight and he can build, what, it was 50 units? 52 units? Would the Central Elementary School even support that right now? You said, what did you say, it was 97%?
93.
93%.
3%? Okay, I had one.
How many kids would that be for the tissue study?
Wow.
Kid, elementary kid?
Okay. Not even that many.
So Central couldn't even support that current development right now?
It'd be close.
It would be real close.
Very close.
That's not counting additional homes built in the area that are just built by...
Yeah, I'm just curious. 93% is pretty strong.
And if it was phased, Mike, if it was phased, it could be made to work.
On the current conditions? It could be made to work, okay.
Another word. Allowing expansion.
By phasing it, right. So even, okay, so even at its current state with 93% capacity, we'd be tight with Central. So then there's no question that if it, more density, then we definitely wouldn't even handle it, okay.
All right. Any other discussion? Someone like to make a motion on this item this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move for denial of PB 22-13, Ashbrook Estates, because it is not, and this is, it is not possible to determine whether the request is consistent with the imagined Kirtuk Land Use Plan, policies and goals to make a Maple, Barko, Small Area Plan policies, and the Airport Overlay District purpose.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, hearing none, it carries unanimously. On to the next agenda item. PB 22-14, Porpus LLC, conditional rezoning. Porpus LLC is requesting conditional zoning of 1.29 acres from single-family mainland to conditional light industrial located 8... Porpus LLC is requesting conditional zoning of one point two-nine acres from single-family mainland to conditional light industrial located eight seven seven eight Keratuck Highway, Harbinger, Poplar Branch Township. Mr. Kemp.
Thank you, Chairman. As you mentioned, this is a conditional rezoning request from SFM to conditional LI. The site is located in the southern part of the county. Uh, it is just north of Edgewater Road. Uh, it is actually the parcel just north of Sun Realty, if you're familiar with that. Here is a close-up of the property. It is one point two-nine acres and currently used as a manufacturing facility. Uh, there are two metal buildings currently on the site. The property is zoned SFM. As you can see by this image, the properties to the north are zoned and across the highway are zoned GB. And the properties to the south are, uh, zoned light industrial. Uh, just as a note, staff actually isn't certain how this property is the only one that remained SFM on this stretch. Uh, it could have been an oversight or a mistake, uh, years ago, but staff is not, we looked into it, and we are not certain how that, uh, occurred.
Especially with the building. They don't look residential.
No, no, they don't. And, uh, I'll actually speak to that right now. Um, the parcel was, uh, granted a use permit in nineteen eighty-six for the light industrial use and has been operating that way ever since. Uh, the property is zoned residentially right now, which makes the existing use non-conforming. Therefore, uh, any expansion to bring it into, uh, conformity, a conditional rezoning is required. This slide here shows the proposed, uh, development plan. Uh, the main, uh, thing is a new forty-eight hundred square foot two-story building that's located between the existing buildings and the highway. Uh, parking area will be added, uh, behind the building to accommodate the parking requirement. The septic field is in the front of the site. And lastly, to meet all requirements of the UDO, there will be landscaping planted along, uh, the highway as well as the north and western property lines, uh, where the site is adjacent to SFM or GB property. Here is a elevation, uh, of the building. It's showing a split face block, uh, building. Imagine Keratuck designates the site as G three Mixed Use Center and Corridor. Uh, the G three classification, uh, encourages a wide range of uses and a variety of housing types and commercial development. As you can see in the second bullet point, light industrial is an appropriate land use. I will also mention it is in the Point Harbor sub-area of Imagine Keratuck and is consistent with its goal to incentivize and revitalize existing businesses. Uh, there's two, uh, relevant, uh, goals and policies in the Imagine Keratuck Plan. The first is Land Use Goal and Policy Three, which is to support new and existing commercial development that adheres to community appearance and design standards. The second is Economic Development Goal Policy One, uh, support retention and expansion of existing businesses. The Technical Review Committee, uh, reviewed this application and recommended approval uh, with one condition, that the building design meet the, uh, UDO ordinance standards, specifically section five point eight point three C. Uh, staff finds that this consists, uh, this request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of Imagine Keratuck and is compatible with the surrounding land uses. It is an appropriate zoning district for the existing use as well as the proposed expansion. It is reasonable and in public interest. It is, it would result in a logical and orderly development pattern and would not conflict with the purpose of the ordinance. The Planning Board reviewed this, uh, application and recommended approval by a five to zero vote, suggesting that the text amendment is consistent with Land Use Goal Policy Three and Economic Goal and Policy One. So with that, I will stand by for any questions.
Um, you've mentioned the, um, condition, um, that the building design standards, uh, shall, shall be met.
Yes.
Are we talking, uh, a metal building?
No, and that's, uh, the point of this condition because light industrial use is exempt from meeting, uh, certain design standards. The purpose of this condition is really to work with the applicant to avoid having a metal building that fronts the highway. Um, right now, the proposed elevation is split block, so it is not a metal building, or at least does not appear to be.
Okay, and it would be, just to, I had this question, it would be in front of the existing metal sheds, buildings?
Uh, yes, that is correct. It's between the existing buildings and the highway. I will note that originally a development plan was submitted to us that had it behind, uh, at the rear of the site. What happened is because of the way the site is oriented with the property lines, there wasn't enough width to, um, get safety vehicles back. So, you know, at staff's request, this was, uh, adjusted, and the building was brought to the front of the site.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any, any more questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right, at this time, I'll invite the applicant up or a representative for the applicant to, uh, talk to us. Good evening.
Hey, good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michael Strater. I'm an engineer with Quivone, associates of the Civil Engineering Record for the conditional rezoning application for you this evening. And also present and available is the owner and applicant, Mr. LG Shaw. Not to express any new or indifferent information, but just to reiterate what you've already heard in the staff report and what you've probably read in the, your, your packet. The application is in conformance with the county's land use plan. Uh, the conceptual development plan is in conformance with the county UDO and dimensional standards. And also what you heard is that the, the existing land use has operated as light industrial since it was originally approved in the nineteen eighties. And even in the community meeting, we, we have expressed support from our neighboring property owners, which you, you should have copies of. So we feel like we would be, that the applicant would be in harmony with the existing and surrounding land uses. Also, just to be transparent, I'll add, the, the applicant also owns multiple properties, not only the subject parcel, which you have before you this evening, but also another parcel that's a little bit farther north in the industrial park just south of the, the water park. So on a daily basis, there are, uh, personnel carrying equipment, um, up and down the highway e- every day. So part of this task is to consol- hopefully to consolidate those multiple uses into a single, uh, parcel. And we feel like that'll function as a much more efficient and a much safer operation. But we're here to answer any questions. Just my head during your, before you go into deliberations.
I might answer.
All right, anything from any of the board members? All right, thank you so much for coming out this evening. We appreciate it. Uh, at this time, I'll open the public comment. I have no one signed up. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this tonight? All right, seeing no one, then I will close the public comment. And, uh, unless there's any further discussion, I'll open for, for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve, um, PB twenty-two dash fourteen, Porpus LLC, because the request is consistence, consistent with the land use plan goal three and economic development goal one. The request quest is reasonable and in the public interest because it would result in logical and orderly development pattern, would not conflict with the public interest, and is in harmony with the purpose and intent of this ordinance. I would add the condition that the building design standards of the Unified Development Ordinance shall be met or exceeded to ensure consistency with land use goal three.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, hearing none, it passes unanimously. All right, do we need a break or anything? Just keep going, guys?
Bush.
Okay. Moving on to new business. Number one, sole source purchase, uh, resolution for Omni Site.
We have one more public hearing.
We do? Did I miss?
Campground access.
I did.
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
He's been waiting all night for that.
I'm pushing. I did. That wasn't the one you wanted to skip. All right, PB twenty-two dash sixteen, Keratuck County Campground Access Text Amendment Requested in the UDO. Chapter four Use Standards to Change Campground Access Requirements.
All right, thank you, Chairman. Uh, this is a request to amend the UDO, uh, in regards to the regulations for campgrounds. I will first note that this text amendment does apply countywide, but I did want to give you a little background of how we got here. Uh, on July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, this board approved, uh, campgrounds for the HTOBX property. In that approval, uh, there was a lengthy discussion on access, if you'll remember. And the access is required to be on the same parcel as the campground. That resulted in a parallel access road to the existing easement that they use, uh, to access the water park. Uh, the board looked at that and said, you know, this isn't a logical development pattern and asked staff to take a look at how this could, uh, be fixed. So staff found the easiest way to do this would be to amend section four point two point four J three of the ordinance. And what this amendment does is it allows access to be on a separate parcel from the campground, but the campground still has to abut a major street. You know, we felt that was the, the best of both worlds in that, in that case. Uh, looking at the Imagine Keratuck Land Use Plan, there's three applicable goals and policies we found. The first is land and, land use goal and policy two, which is to carefully consider the design and location of intense uses uh, as to mitigate compatibility issues. The second policy is Economic Development Goal and Policy One, which is to support the retention and expansion of existing businesses as well as to promote the development of new businesses. Lastly, is Transportation Goal and Policy One, which is to improve safety, traffic flow, access, and the appearance along major highways. The Planning Board, uh, reviewed this item and recommended approval by a four to zero vote. Uh, they've noted that the text amendment is consistent with the Imagine Keratuck, uh, and the three goals and policies that I listed, uh, before. And so with that, I will stand by for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kemp?
Somebody turns into the water park and the campground, they're going to turn, take a right in that deceleration lane, heading south, one fifty-eight. That's the road that they're going to use to, uh, to, uh, to make, be the abutting road to the camp. So that's, I mean, there's no, it's just that road.
Right, uh, if this amendment went through, it would become one accessway, the same accessway that accesses the, uh, water park would also be used for the campground. So it would be one way in, one way out.
Okay, that's, I just, that's why I wanted to just make sure we were on that same page.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kemp.
All right, thank you, Chairman.
Have no one signed up for public comment this evening? Is there anyone that would like to speak to this agenda item in the audience that did not sign up? Seeing no one, I will close the public comment, and if there's no further discussion from the board, uh, ask for a motion.
Chairman, I move for approval of PB twenty-two dash sixteen, Keratuck County Campground Access Text Amendment.
Second, or, Owen can second it.
Okay, we've got a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Now I'm going to jump over to new business. You guys keep me straight this evening. Sole source purchase, uh, resolution of Omni Site Remote Monitoring Equipment, uh, for mainland sewer.
Mr. Chairman, this resolution, before you authorizes the county to acquire visual alarm monitors and cellular transmitters for its mainland sewer system, uh, the vendor is Pete, Duty and Associates. This would, this is authorized by the general statutes. When standardization or compatibility of equipment is necessary, uh, would allow the county to, to, uh, pay ten thousand five hundred seventy dollars to this vendor for this equipment.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, uh, next up is board appointments. Item A, Board of Adjustment.
Sir, Chairman, if I may on this, and I talked to Cherie about this as well, um, as far as my appointment to the Board of Adjustments is not an alternate. Um, I looked on the county website here tonight as well. Uh, it's replacing Carol Bell. It has Carol Bell as Commissioner Etheridge's appointment on the website. And she's not his, because obviously he's here reappointing Sam Miller. So my, the alternate was Dr. Hammer, Greg Hammer, who is filled his spot that, so I talked to Cherie about this twice, so.
Okay.
Shay would actually not be an alternate. He would be taking Carol Bell's spot, and the alternate spot right now is.
I think when you.
That's not how it works, no.
He's got to go in.
No, he would have to start out as an alternate.
Oh, do they start out as an alternate?
Yep, according to the UDO, they have to start out as an alternate. Then they move up to regular members when.
When somebody comes off.
That's right.
Okay, I didn't understand, but, but why would it list on the website? It still lists Carol Bell.
Probably old.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, the correct listing is in the.
In your agenda there.
Oh, okay, for, I'll scroll down.
Yep, page two fourteen.
So I guess then Commissioner Beaumont, next time, we'll have one to appoint to.
An alternate.
Okay, an alter- all right. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, so you're going to, are you making a motion to put Shay Bance as a first alternate?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Well, I'll second that, thank you. We'll move on. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we're on to Commissioner Etheridge.
I've moved to appoint Sam Miller to a full term.
All right.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, next item is item B, Planning Board. Kevin, you're up again.
Brian Ennis. I'd like to make the motion to nominate Brian Ennis, um, to the, uh, fill the unexpired term of through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, and item C, uh, Lord Kirk Crook Volunteer Relief. Who's getting that? Mike is?
I'll make a motion for approval of the two.
Second it.
Kathy Miller and Jonathan Britton, just so we have it for the record. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, consensus agenda. Any comments, questions?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You got a move with Dom?